All right, we're gonna start. So I want to welcome everyone for the Wareham Zonic Board Appeals for tonight. It's Wednesday, October 13, 2021. It is 6:32 PM and we are at the Room 320 at the Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I'll make a roll call. My far-right, Mr. Chris County Associate Member, and for the record, he'll be sitting throughout the night for Mrs. DeBene's chair. He'll be voting throughout the night on her seat. Then we have to my, our Town Planner, Mr. Ken Buckland, our Clerk, Mr. Jim Akibachi, my far-left, Mr. Richard Sample, and myself, the Chair, Nazir Al-Khlasie. And also for the record, just came in, our regular member, Mr. Jake Morrison. Also present, our freshly new Assistant Planner, I forget the name.
It's Aaron Shaheen.
Aaron Shaheen?
Yes.
Aaron Shaheen. Well, welcome to the town of Wareham.
Thank you.
All right, very good. So he is the Assistant Town Planner. Also present is Independent Consultant, Mr. Charles Rowley, PE. And that being said, we're gonna get to work. Before I start tonight, it's a very long night, so we're gonna have a little bit of different rules for tonight. And on the big hearings, we're gonna, I brought a timer with me, so we do like the 5-5-5. So the applicant speaks five minutes, board members five minutes, public five minutes. You'll have the chance to come back and answer until I say it's getting too long, so we have to cut it off for the next time. Also, because it's busy tonight, we don't want people speaking on top of each other. You'll have to have the floor by me that goes for applicant, public, and board members to speak. If you speak without having the floor, I'm gonna have to stop you. And that being said, this is it, so let's get it done and be as civilized as possible.
Do you want to take the Settlers Glen?
Yes. And the preliminary business, yes. Okay, on the preliminary business, it's not on the agenda. We had Mr. Buckland on Settlers Glen. If you all remember, the 20 townhouses, the, in East Wareham there, the sales, the 40B for sale. And I guess they sold it and they want to swap it to 20 rentals, right, Ken? Kenny?
Hi, Mark.
So they want to swap it to rentals?
Yes, they want to change it from homeownership to rental.
Rental. The question is, the board has to decide whether they think it's a minor modification or major modification. I'm gonna start by Chris. What do you think, Chris?
I think it's a good thing to get more housing going for 40B. Whether it's to rent.
I'm not sure. It seems like it might be a major change.
Major?
Yeah, we're not, now it's gonna be rental, it's not gonna be sold?
Yes.
Right? Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm undecided.
Right. Myself too, because I don't stand, does the traffic changes? Does the HUD changes? Does housing changes? Anyway, let's see, Ken, what do you think?
Do you want to have Mark Bobrowski chime in on this and give his perspective to you first on what they're proposing?
Is he here?
He's on, he's on the speakerphone.
Mr. Bobrowski, are you on?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mark Bobrowski. My office is in Concord. I represent Settlers Glen LLC. This is unusual. Most of the time, a format changes for housing, it goes from rental to for sale for obvious reasons. The developer wants to get out of the deal and by selling the units, he moves on. Here, they're already for sale and my client wants to change them to rental. There's a couple of things to consider here first. Number one, we're asking you to treat this as an insubstantial change. That means you've got 20 days to decide it from the day I emailed the request to Ken. If you don't take action on it, then it is deemed to be done according to the HAC regulations. If, on the other hand, you decide tonight that it's insubstantial, we'll work with Ken to prepare something that we can record at the Registry of Deeds. If you decide that it's substantial, you have to open a public hearing within 30 days and send notice out to the butters. The key advantage for you is that in converting it from for sale to rental, you would gain 15 units on the subsidized housing inventory. Right now, only the affordable units for sale count, and that's five, but by converting it to rental, all 20 of the units would count. I can understand that there might be some concerns about the location of the housing or the glut perhaps of rental that you may or not have in this area, and the type of the housing as well. But we think that this is an opportunity to provide small, young, emerging families with rental housing, probably in lieu of for sale. And the kids will have a little bit more area to play. We worked very hard to open up that back area of the lot for some recreational opportunities. So it's just a different kind of opportunity for people that are in the rental market to have a lawn and a place where they can spread out a little bit more.
Well, I'm, we're gonna hear from the board. What do you think, Jim?
I kind of like the fact that all count as affordable, but the word affordable, I don't know what affordable means. Does that mean $500 a month for a three-bedroom, or is it gonna be a little bit more than that? I'd like to ask through the chair to the person on the phone.
The price is set by formula.
Counselor, if I may, we don't want to get into prices, like the rentals and stuff. Let's, let's take, if we think it's a major, we're gonna argue, we go for major.
I don't know, I don't know what the price, I don't know what the rental income is, that's how I.
Well, the rental, the 25% will be affordable, maybe 70% of the median, and the other ones, they could rent them regularly, not all of them.
You said it's gonna be.
It will be counted, no, it'll be counted to our stock, but it will not be all affordable.
Well, I can assure you that it won't be $500 a month. The price is a formula. You take the median income of the area, Wareham area, and 80% is the maximum amount of the median income that the household can earn, and the rent is adjusted for household size. So in a two-bedroom unit, for example, that's a three-person household. In a one-bedroom unit, it would be a two-person household, and in a three-bedroom unit, it would be a four-person household. And obviously, a four-person household makes more money than a two-person household. So I would guesstimate, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, that a one-bedroom would rent for something in the range of $800 or $900, a two-bedroom in the range of something on the order of $1,100, perhaps up to $1,200, and a three-bedroom would go for something in the range of $1,500. And those are just rough numbers. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me. But it's, it's not us.
That answers my question.
Counselor.
We're not, we don't set the price. The price is set by the Housing and Urban Development Federal Agency and Massachusetts DHCD. We just follow the orders.
All right, Counselor, a quick question. Is the 25% will be the median income and the rest regular rents, price-wise, market price?
Correct.
Or they all be affordable?
That is exactly right. 75% of the units will rent at market rate prices and 25% will rate at affordable, will rent at affordable prices.
You get that?
Mark, okay, 75% market.
Right.
5% affordable.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Richard, what do you think?
I think that it's probably a minor, but again, let's see how the board feels about it all in total.
Jake, what do you think?
Nothing at this time.
All right, what's the wishes? We have to wish something. Minor or major?
Minor or major?
Well, it's actually substantial or insubstantial, but I get it.
That's what, that's what we're hearing. We don't have to decide. When did, when did I file the application?
We got 20 days. I'd like to take the.
When did I file the application?
This application came in last week.
Do we have until the 27?
Uh, Mark, do we have until the 27?
To decide?
If the board is considering treating this as an insubstantial change, I would gladly give you an extension of time until the 27.
Yeah, why don't we get an extension until the 28 and we decide on 27?
That's fine with me, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. Thanks, Counselor. All right, we'll move forward, so, so we'll wait until next hearing. Thank you.
Okay.
On the continued public hearing, I'm just gonna take off order quick so we get people going. 44-21 on Saffron Holdings, we have a withdrawal letter. They want to withdraw their application. That is 2297 and 2299 Cranberry Highway. Okay. Just your name for the record.
Attorney Jillian Morton.
Yeah. And you guys was.
For Main Street.
Thank you.
Would like to withdraw the application, not pursuing this plan at this time. We've reworked.
You want to withdraw without prejudice or just withdraw?
Withdraw.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, any, regarding this public hearing, it's still open. Anyone on the public want to speak on that matter? I hear none. Board members, nothing, so let's move to close.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, so 5-0-0 now wishes to withdraw.
Make a motion to, accept the withdrawal.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, so you're done.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna take a, so that's gone. All right, we're gonna go to 39-20, First Hartford Realty Corp., special permit slash variance site plan review for 3005 Cranberry Highway for rain car wash.
This is the new plan.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. I was advised I'd be able to have access to.
Yeah. I don't know how to run it, maybe.
Aaron, you familiar with all this stuff yet?
I don't know what he's trying to do.
All right, you wanna just have a seat, give us your name and address for the record while we get this ready?
Good evening, Your Honor. Excuse me, good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'll be nice.
My name is Don Troyer, on behalf of the applicant, First Hartford. My address is One Am's Place, Quincy, Massachusetts.
Okay. So just your name for the record.
I'm Curtis Quitzaw with VHB. We're at One Cedar Street, Providence.
All right, thank you. So the public hearing's still open. If you want to fill us in quick while he's doing this.
Absolutely, and just for the.
See where we at.
And absolutely, and just for the record, we also have with us tonight Matt Keely of VHB, he's our traffic engineer, Jamie Hill, who's from the developer, and Sean Kavanaugh, who's from the applicant, who's in the audience, who may be speaking tonight. Real quickly, I wanted to bring this board up to speed. We first presented to you on August 11th for a special permit site plan in connection with a car wash use at 3,005, 3,013 Cranberry Highway. We went through the project in detail on August 11th. We were, left that meeting with the intentions to receive and review and respond to your peer engineers' review of the plans. We also were instructed by the board to consult with the building inspector. As this board is aware, in around June 29th of 2021, the building inspector issued his original denial letter and identified several variances to which he believed at that time we were, we needed in order to proceed with the project. Prior to filing the application on July 11th, we had revised our plans in order to meet all variances that were identified. At the August 11th hearing, the board requested that we have a meeting with, with the building inspector to have him update his letter, which he did on September 18th. And in essence, the building inspector found that the project still required a special permit for more vehicle service use, also required site plan review, given the fact that we are seeking more than 10 parking spaces, and basically indicated that we met all variants and all requirements under the bylaw except for one provision, which is Section 763.4 of the bylaw regarding a 15-foot landscape buffer. As a result, the applicant filed a application for a variance to be heard tonight along with the continued hearing and the special permit site plan review, and we are before you tonight on both the variance request as well as a continued hearing. I was planning on starting with the, the variance request and then basically turn it over to our engineer to address the, the responses to your peer engineer and address any additional questions this board may have in connection with the plan, if that's acceptable to the chair.
Yes, let's hear the variance argument first and we go from there.
You want this?
Yeah, please. All right, go ahead, sir.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant respectfully submits that it's entitled to a variance from the bylaw due to the unique shape of the lot that has resulted wholly from the actions of the Commonwealth through its powers of eminent domain, which was created at no fault of the current owners and which affects the property and not the zoning district generally. It's also our position, the board can grant variance, would not be substantially detrimental to the public good, but rather benefit it, and would not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or the purpose of the bylaw, and that the applicant would suffer substantial hardship. I realize that my time is limited. I have submitted a detailed brief dated September 17th that identifies our reasons justifying the request for variance, which I will summarize as follows. In essence, in or around October 2018, the Mass Department of Transportation by eminent domain took, took a lot of properties off the corridor off of Cranberry Highway. And in particular, it took certain property off the site for easements in connection with the roadwork that is currently being conducted on Cranberry Highway. This specific area which was taken is to place and allow for vehicles heading northwest on Cranberry Highway to be able to take a U-turn to access properties on the southerly side of the highway. If Mass DLT had not taken the land from the property, the proposed project would comply with Section 763.4 of the bylaw and provide for the required 15-foot landscape buffer area. However, because of this taking, and if you, I don't know if you have the plan that I submitted in connection with my variance application. And until we can get the projector up and running, I will identify.
Is that the one shaded red, 916?
It's this plan right here.
339 square feet?
Yes. It's shaded red to identify the area to which we are requesting, in essence, a nine-foot, .16 inches variance of the 15-foot landscape buffer area. It's our position that we have met all of the elements requiring for a variance. In particular, there are circumstances that exist that relate to unique shape of the lot that affects the property, which is not characteristic of other lots in the area. Variances have been deemed properly granted due to the shape of the lot that resulted from the actions of the Commonwealth through its powers of eminent domain, which were created at no fault of the previous owners. Here, the project plans show a landscape buffer zone of 15 feet is provided along the front street line, and no cars will park within the 15-foot buffer area. The 15-foot buffer area includes a soil berm of minimum 24 inches height and will be planted to visually screen parked cars. If you look at that plan that I have referenced, and I realize we're gonna go over the five minutes on this unfortunately.
Go ahead, go ahead, another performance.
Look at the plan that I have referenced. All parking is not along Cranberry Highway, it's actually to the rear of the building. It's our position that that section is not applicable to this project, but in order to adhere to the building inspector's belief that there is a variance, we have filed this variance application. We believe that a variance, as you can see, of nine feet, 16 inches is only necessary in this small area of the property, as the remainder of the property provides the required 15-foot buffer, and the project implies with all other dimensional requirements pursuant to the building inspector's most recent letter. We also believe that we have met the literal enforcement of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship. As discussed, Massachusetts case law supports the granting of variances due to hardships created from the actions of the Commonwealth through its powers of eminent domain, which impact the ability of owners to meet dimensional regulations. In this case, the property is located in the commercial S District, which has been identified by the town of Wareham as an appropriate location for motor vehicle service use upon receipt of a site plan and special permit. The appropriateness of such use in the location is recognized as the site is currently fully developed with a former 99 restaurant and paved parking areas and is boarded by other commercial uses of Eastern Bank, Taco Bell, and Ocean State Job Lot. The unique shape of the lot that resulted due to Mass DLT's taking of an easement on the property renders the applicant and any other entity standing in its shoes unable to develop the site for such use as it is unable to comply with this 15-foot landscape buffer along this very small 339 square feet area that's identified on that plan that I've showed you. Thus, based on, based on this, the request relief, if it's not granted, the applicant will be prevented from using the property in a manner authorized and deemed particularly suitable in such a district. We also believe that we have met the requirement that the grant of the variance will promote the public good by permitting the cohesive redevelopment of two adjacent parcels for single, singular use. The property will undergo, as we had discussed on August 11th, significant aesthetic upgrade in building design and improvements which are beneficial to the town, the surrounding neighborhood area, and community at large. The project will eliminate the status quo of having a site with a blighted restaurant structure, which has remained vacant for several years along an important commercial corridor, which is currently being improved, and promote an opportunity for the construction and use of a business that has a vast improvement over existing conditions. It's our position that the use of the site as an automatic car wash will not have adverse effects which overbalances beneficial effects for either the neighborhood or the town. And in particular, in view of the particular characteristics of the site and of the proposal relation to the site. Finally, we believe we meet the final element which is necessary for an allowance of a variance, is that the variance will not substantially derogate from the bylaw's purpose and intent. The purpose of Section 763.4 is to ensure that a 15-foot landscape buffer be provided along the front street line, that no cars be parked within the 15-foot landscape buffer, and that the buffer include a soil berm of 24 inches height and be sufficiently planted so as to visually screen cars. As I've indicated, our plans have demonstrated that we have a landscape buffer of 15 feet is provided along the front street line, with only the exception of this small section along the radius that reduces down to 5.8 feet, as shown in red on the plan. No cars, as I've indicated, will be parked within this 15-foot buffer zone, and the buffer zone includes a soil berm of minimum 24 inches height. Thus, we comply with Section 76.3 except for this small 339 square foot area. We are therefore requesting, based on my papers and the argument which I just advanced, that this board grants a 9.16-foot variance from Section 7.63.4 of the bylaw, requiring a landscape buffer of 15 feet along the front street line and the 339 square foot area shown in red on the plan that was attached to my application.
All right, very well. Okay. I'm gonna start with the boards before we go on to the public. Let's concentrate first on one thing at a time. Let's concentrate on that variance. What do you make out of it, Chris? The hardship, the uniqueness, the argument the gentleman did?
So I understand the argument that, you know, eminent domain, that the state came in and took, you know, a portion of the, of the land there. So you're just requesting that variance for where the, where the turnaround is on that one corner of the property?
That is correct. Just in that area that's highlighted as red within that, the plan in which I attached. Everywhere else, we meet the 15-foot buffer except for in that area that's identified as red.
I don't have any more questions.
You good?
I'm all set.
All right, Jimmy, what do you think of the variance?
You know, based on where it is and how that area is gonna be used, I think this is gonna be an easy one for me to grant, personally.
Richard?
Richard.
I agree with Jim.
I agree as well.
All right, I have to agree that you do have a strong hardship, uniqueness, and it will not derogate from the intent of the bylaw. I'm sure a lot of people in the public want to comment on this before we go forward on that variance, so before we argue it more with the, with us, so I want to go to the public. Who's in favor of this project?
Are we talking about the project with just the.
Just the, yeah, just on that variance. Who would like to speak in favor of just the variance of that project? I hear none. Against for the variance? Somebody want to speak against?
We have a.
Yeah.
We have a microphone right over there if you.
Yeah, just grab it, Chair, Counselor. All right.
Hi, Attorney Jillian Morton, 184 Main Street. And it's my understanding we're talking strictly on the, the variance right now, Mr. Chairman, correct?
Correct, yes.
So, starting with the variance, it's a little tough because I'd really like to discuss the special permit, but I'll discuss the 40A. Hitting that 48 standard, we're looking for a nine-foot variance here. Although it may seem minimal, I also think that that, the intention of the bylaw with that landscape buffer, buffer is important, and I think it's being a little glossed over here. The importance of that is to shield the car, and we already know that this structure is going to be big and it's gonna be bright, and the, having that buffer there, the landscape is important. So I think that the hardship regarding eminent domain, I don't know if that's unique, in my opinion. There's many other properties. Every property over there on Cranberry Highway has some sort of taking happening. This is a new applicant. They're, they're held to a different standard, I would say, than the existing restaurants and other retail that are on that, on the sites that had this eminent domain happen. They're seeking a lot here, and I think to just approve this variance, just because it seems de minimis, and having that hardship being eminent domain, I mean, it's at the deference of the board, and obviously, we'll speak more about the special permit, because I think it's a little bit putting the cart before the horse, because I'd really like to be able to speak on that, so, just short, for this part. I'll just stay here.
Counselor, do you want to answer some on that?
No, I believe my, my argument stands for itself. I believe case law has supported the very request at which we're looking for, and I believe that the de minimis request, given the fact that we comply with all our dimensional requirements, and that this is seeking an area to which the cars actually are, are actually being parked to the rear of the property, not along the street line. We believe that our arguments speak for itself and would ask the board to grant the variance. Thank you.
All right.
Well, I think if I were voting on this specific portion of this application, I would, I would still tend to, to vote in favor of the variance, but I'd apply a condition that the remaining buffer area be heavily vegetated with a significant abovati style, six-foot or taller, solid, almost like a wall fence, so that when cars are making that turnaround, their headlights aren't going into the car wash, and so that when cars are coming into the car wash, their headlights aren't going into the turnaround, so one's not obstructing the other. I'd want it to be.
I believe we're gonna be talking about the landscape plan and the updated landscape plan, and I believe the appropriate place would be to put a condition within the site plan, and we hear you, and I look forward to talking to you about the landscaping which we are proposing up there, which I do believe is substantial.
Yep, mine.
Chris, do you want to say something?
I agree with Jim on that.
Richard?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Nothing at this time.
Anyone else would like to, do you want, do you want to say anything else on that variance, or anyone else?
Not on the variance at this time.
All right, very well. So let's move forward now to the special permit, I guess.
Okay. Does the board want to vote on the variance and get that out of the way, or?
No, we could.
Wait till the end, that's fine.
Wait until we close the whole thing.
That's fine.
Thank you.
In connection with the rehearing on the application for special permit and site plan review, as I indicated previously, we had basically left off, had addressed the bulk of the questions from the board, but there was some questions which were open, particularly response to the peer review, have an opportunity to review those plans, provide us comments, which we have done. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to our project engineer to have him basically go through the changes and discuss where we stand at this point with the plans.
All right, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I've got a small laundry list, and I'll try to go quickly through it and see if I can stay to my five minutes. The first thing I wanted to talk about were changes to the plans since we last met. And generally, what I want to say at first is that the site plans and the building program has not really changed materially. There are some small edits and revisions that we made, were basically to address peer review comments, to provide a little bit more information to the plans, but it's the same building footprint, the same number of vacuum stations, same number of parking spaces. same number of parking spaces, same circulation patterns and pay lanes and everything. The changes that were made were a small adjustment to the radius of the curb at the driveway to ensure that a fire truck can enter the site without having to swing out in the lane and in order to avoid driving his tire up onto the curb. We widened the bailout lane to 20 feet so it can be utilized by the fire department as a fire lane for close access to the west side of the building. And then revisions made specifically in relationship to comments made by the peer reviewer, which we said in our initial responses that we would address. We substituted some tree species as recommended. We added some spot grades to the plan for clarity of grading intent. We made some minor grading refinements at one of the stormwater basins where we contoured the plan a little funny. And then, we added some construction details and made minor edits to notes or details that we said we would do in our response to comments. I'll touch in on some of these in a little bit more detail as I go through here, but the takeaway was that we'd like you to have is that the project has not really changed as a result of these changes that we made. Today, we just completed and filed a lighting photometric plan. The plan illustrates lumen levels throughout the site from the proposed light fixtures that are on light poles that were placed on the site, and also from light fixtures mounted on the exterior of the building. The lumen levels are acceptable and appropriate for uses in a commercial strip and are intended to make customers feel safe and secure. An update relative to comments that were made by the fire department. We had submitted written responses to Captain Brandolini's comments on September 15th, and we included a complete set of the data sheets for the chemicals that will be used and stored inside the building. So, that information has been passed along. And then, as I noted, we made some minor changes to the plans, specifically for comments that we received from the fire department. And as we stand here today, we've not received any further comments from the fire department. So, as far as we can tell, there are no further substantive issues with the relative to life safety at this time. And then, next, I'd like to go through and address some of the peer review comments in the letter that was dated October 4, 2021. I'm gonna focus on the ones that sort of warrant some further discussion. You received comments relative to the construction entrance and a concern about having access to Cranberry Highway with the construction entrance, and our response to that is just the same as we responded the first time. We just believe that if we've got complete access along the frontage of the property, we should have the right to allow construction vehicles to access the property from Cranberry Highway. We should have the same choice and flexibility that other properties along Cranberry Highway have, and we shouldn't have to limit ourselves to coming and going at the signal. We didn't feel that there was any particular safety concern in that regard, which I think represents a little bit of a difference of opinion with Mr. Crowley. Comment to grading on Cranberry Highway. We designed the site to match up with the design of the construction project that's going on right now, today. And I had mentioned before that in order to address some drainage concerns, the ponding and puddling that historically has occurred out there, the state designed elevated the road somewhat, and so, we're not... We did not design the site on the site plans that you see to existing grades that exist out there. We designed them to meet the grades of the proposal. May I continue?
Just a minute, please. So, we have time for everybody. Just give you just a minute.
Sure.
You'll have the chance to come back.
That's fine.
All right. So, you're talking about the design you do with the state. Go ahead.
Oh, okay.
For a minute.
So, we're meeting that, and so, the question was whether or not we had, and the answer is yes, we did. While it's not entirely a foot, I characterize it as, because I was told by the highway engineer who designed it, that they raised it up about a foot. And at the low spot, I think the changing grade was something like nine tenths of a There was also comments about site grades along the rear of the property and whether or not it's graded in a way that would prevent water from the Ocean State job lot site to roll into our site. And we added some spot grades to it to clear up our grading intent. I mentioned before that we added the... We widened up the escape path, the bailout lane, if you will.
Let me pass it... Let's hear, like, it's too much information at one point. Ten minutes is a lot of information to digest, so we'll think about it as we're thinking. Chris, before we get into details, all these details, which I totally respect, and I'm sure we're gonna hear from Mr. Crowley and with the public and everything, let's talk in general. What do you think of the project as a general? Just have an idea. What do you think?
Well, as a general, you know, I've seen a lot of things on Facebook. I've seen a lot of people for it, or I've seen a lot of people against it. I see them, you know, look like something in the future. I mean, that area, we don't have a plan in that area. I mean, it doesn't really look like a Cape Cod Strip, you know, Cape Cod housing, and there's like really no architectural plan for that area, so I guess I think it might be a good addition. It might be something that sparks, like, a new little bit of architecture, may cause some new future growth in that area. And I guess my only concern was, well, I won't get into the details of that right now. That's it.
Jimmy?
I'm up to speed with everything. I would... I guess I'd like to take the opportunity to make one comment, and that's that I have heard some negative feedback based on the ponding, but as I read the negative feedback, I realized that it was misinformation being spread. So, I take this opportunity to say, the highway is fixing the highway. The applicant is fixing this property. This property will pond now because the highway has been elevated, but that doesn't mean this property is gonna remain at this elevation, so you can't judge this horse by its current color. Can I respond just real quickly?
Yeah, go ahead. So, in connection with the design comment from Mr. Conti, I just wanted to... We did hear concerns concerning, we had some metallic blue on the original design. We had gone back to our renderings and had removed the italic blue and basically created just the solid blue going all the way around the site to remove any of that metallic shiny futuristic views that the board had, and these are the updated renderings which we have, are providing tonight. In connection, I also provide this slide to basically demonstrate, you know, the current brands representing Wareham, Mass. on the corridor, and we have O'Reilly's here that's a bright red. I realize it's difficult to see. We have McDonald's with the red and yellow. We have the Taco Bell, which is right next door with the bright red, and then these other areas that do have bright vivid colors, and we believe that by toning down the color of the car wash by removing the metallic, that seemed to have an issue that we are more in line with and consistent with the corridor. In connection with the comments about hearing concerns about flooding on the area, we actually had a unique event occur, not a... We had a hurricane. Hurricane actually occurred in September 2nd of 2012. We actually took the opportunity to go out to the site and take some photographs of the area after, on September 2nd, at 3:32 PM. And as you can see from these photographs, and as everyone is aware, Mass DLT is doing a significant amount of work on this area, and this is basically the results of that major rainstorm that happened on September 2nd, and it does appear, and I can let Kirk talk to it more, that what Mass DLT is basically doing and performing in that area is doing dramatic improvements, and combined with the stormwater work of which we are going to be doing that is fully identified in our plans and stormwater management report is only going to improve the area. So, we believe we've listened, we've heard those concerns, and it looks as if there is some misinformation about the flooding, and we believe that it appears that what Mass DLT is doing combined with what we are proposing to do should alleviate any of those concerns.
All right, very well. Richard, what do you think?
I have nothing to say at this time.
I have nothing at this time as well.
Okay, I have nothing to say, but I would like to talk quick about the access to 28 there, going out...
For construction?
No, for...
General.
In general, the one you're gonna have, the exit?
Yes.
Or the... Don't you think this, it's a little hazard there to come and end that building after that roundabout? Too close to the... Because that's gonna be like a circle and go in traffic. It's such a short area. We had a similar matter where Aldi's and Wendy's in West Wareham, and I was an advocate to give it to the gentleman who was here, I believe, Donegan, but they have like, there is about 25 feet of the state, like, emergency lane, so when you go out of there, you kind of go with the mercy and blend with the traffic. You don't have that luxury over there.
I'd like to turn that question over to our traffic engineer to respond. Matt Keely, Matt?
Yep. Thank you, Doug. Again, for the record, Matt Keely, traffic engineer with VHB. Just to address that question on access, I would like to point out that anyone making that movement is making a very slow U-turn and will be getting back on Route 628 at a very slow speed. Today, it's a pretty wide, open, undefined curb cut. Under the future condition, it'll be a well-defined right turn-in, right turn-out driveway, so it's much easier for the drivers to sort of see and react to the conditions on the side of the roadway.
Right, but how about the traffic coming down straight without the circle, without the rotor?
The traffic heading eastbound on 6?
The one heading east, yeah.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I think they're turning right out at an organized intersection. They have the same visibility that they would have today. I don't see an issue with...
So, you don't think it'll affect...
I think just consolidating the access in this area is a benefit to access off the main roadway.
Light will control. They won't be coming through because these guys, these guys and these guys won't be coming through.
Right. But if the light is green, if the light is green, if the light is green and everybody coming, heading east, and somebody's leaving the car wash, don't you think a little hazard or a little danger?
I think it's no different than any unsignaled curb cut along the corridor today. As long as we're providing adequate size distance, which we are, then it's no different from any other curb cut along the corridor.
So, in the normal case, any other town or city, you think that's a good practice, the curb to the highway like this?
Well, that... You mean the indentation?
The exit on 28, yeah. You would think it's not a problem. I know we have a lot of them in town, but they've been there forever, but it doesn't mean if it's... I don't know if it's wrong or right, the numbers would speak and the engineers would speak, but if they're wrong, it doesn't mean we have to keep doing it wrong.
No, it is common practice to have right turn-in, right turn-out driveways on median-divided highways.
All right. Do you wanna add anything before I hear from our town engineer? Go ahead.
If you're aware of it or not, but on the DOT design drawings, they were providing two entrances to the site, and we're closing one of them. So, we're gonna be... We're actually reducing the curb openings on the highway on our site.
They were given after reconstruction or prior?
Yeah, their design...
To give two curbs?
Is to give us two curb cuts, and we're going to go to them and then tell them that we want one.
That must have felt bad for you, huh? All right. I wanna turn it to here from Mr. Crowley. I'm sure he has a lot of comments, so we start there just in these info, all of us. Charlie, do you mind?
No, I'll try to water it down a little bit to the more important ones that were already referenced.
Okay. I wanna... I'm trying... I wanna try to... Logically, if all of us wanna sit down and go through these plans properly and all these files, we probably need six months to digest it, but I wanna try to simplify it as much as we can so nobody's confused. I read your letter. Unfortunately, I read your letter and I marked everything that was sent August 18, but you have a new letter that I got late, and I went through the whole comment before, but everything has changed. Couple of things I wanna discuss, if you don't mind, like, for instance, the landscaping. You arguing the landscaping saying like it should be such shrubs or trees and this and that a number, but isn't the landscaping architect, are they following the rules of the bylaws or they're not?
There are a couple of things that I have questions on, and I don't feel that I have the right answer to it, and I'm sort of tossing the question back to you. One of them has to do with the landscape buffers themselves, because I made a point in my initial review...
The one in August 18?
Yeah. Let me get that out.
Yeah, on section number four on the second page, I see there. The landscape and island and stuff.
Yeah, that was one thing that's probably a little bit less of a concern to me than a couple of the other things with respect to the landscaping.
Okay.
When you look at the landscaping that's been shown, and if you look at L-101, when you plan set, it probably is the best way to look at it. This is the plan that shows the small area around that turnaround that they've requested the variance for. In both the landscape buffer that's in the front and the landscape buffer that's in the rear, a portion of the 15-foot-wide landscaping area includes stormwater runoff infiltration They have argued that that's okay. I'm not so sure. Seems to me that the 15 feet is to be dedicated to landscaping. If they want to make the argument that a drainage infiltration area is landscaping, that's gonna be up to you to make that determination, I guess. But if you were to draw a line from the layout line, the proposed layout line, of 15 feet wide, you're into the infiltration basin in the front by probably four or five feet, and if you go to the infiltration in the back, you're into most of it. So, I think the question has to be answered. Are you satisfied with allowing it to be used for stormwater purposes in addition to the landscaping, or is that something that should be pulled out?
I think we have to follow what the number says. I need a plan with a stamp on it. We're gonna follow whoever stamped these plans. I mean, even if I... Let's say we agreed to allow it, and it fails, you know, so we're not the designer. Who does the stormwater management? We have to...
It's not specific in the bylaw that I can see that it says you can't have it. On the other hand, it doesn't say anything about including anything but landscaping features within the buffer. It's been our... It's been our practice to maintain landscaping and keep the drainage areas outside those areas.
I see that.
So...
So, you're saying they should have landscape and it should be a buffer? But how do you...
That's what I'm interpreting the landscape bylaw as saying you need to do. Now, if you look at it...
Now, let me ask a quick question, if you don't mind. A buffer, does it have to be landscaped?
Yes.
It has to be not undisturbed, just has to be landscaped?
That's what the bylaw says.
Okay.
So, you... And in addition to that, I think you have to take a look at the landscaping itself to see whether leaving spaces that are roughly 25 feet wide with nothing in them, 25 to 30 feet wide with nothing, no shrubbery, no nothing, whether or not that constitutes a...
A variance?
Confirming the bylaw or whether it is not conclusive enough. If you... If you look at the buffer that's out in the back, there are one, two, three, four, five small trees and two large trees in a buffer zone that is almost 200 feet long with no landscaping other than that.
No grass, nothing?
Yeah, it's grass, but part of it is--
Grass is not landscaping?
That's for you to determine.
Okay.
Let me ask you a question. These basin is like, it's like a drainage swell?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm going to.
Can't you design it to have the drainage under and have landscaping on top?
We need, just, it's because of relationship to groundwater.
You don't have the separation?
Just don't have the ability to put it and pipe it and dispose of it any other way.
The other thing I want to mention is that this concern, we addressed directly with the building inspector. We also met with Kim Buckland about this area as well. There's nothing in your bylaw prohibits this area to be utilized as such. We are basically utilizing it. My understanding in the building inspector has found that we do not need national relief and a landscaping plan in which we have presented complies with the bylaw. I think Mr. Rowley's directing to your attention his interpretation that we can't utilize a stormwater area for landscaping and is basically asking his board to determine whether or not it agrees with the building inspector and our engineers and plans or whether or not the, whether or not the bylaw holds otherwise. We find that the bylaw does not say what Mr. Rowley seems to be opining.
Let me ask, how about on top of the bank of the basin, if you plant something, would that work?
I have to defer to Kurt on that.
On top of the, I'm sure it, like the basin, like probably have four feet elevation difference. How about the top of the bank?
Inside the basin?
No, no, no. Then it won't filter it properly. On top of the bank--
It's grassed. I mean, we're providing grass, we're providing a grassed buffer.
Yes.
And grass is landscape.
And that's in compliance with your bylaw. So, I mean, I'm not really sure where he's going with this. We believe that, and your building inspector believes with this as well, that our plan complies. If we weren't putting a buffer, if we weren't putting grass, if we weren't doing any landscaping in the front, I can understand the concerns. But we are, we're loaming, we're seaming, we're grass, we're putting trees, bushes, as you can see from a landscape plan. So I'm not 100% sure what Mr. Rowley's comment is really referencing.
I would recommend in this matter, because it's not clear, I guess, in the bylaw, we have to depend on the landscaping architect, depend on his stamp.
Mr. Chairman, there is something that they perhaps could consider.
Yes.
And that's that within the landscaping buffers that do have some portion of the infiltration basins within that 15-foot setback, they could add some wetlands plants in there, which would be a part of the buffer.
Is that reasonable?
Part of, the buffer that they're doing actually has a crushed stone base. It's not a fully landscaped base with grass all through it. It's got a stone base for a particular reason.
Okay, I like that one.
They could add some plants to it that could be wetlands-type plants, because they will be having water in there and they will be fairly close to the groundwater.
Is that reasonable?
I think it's reasonable to take a look at shrubs or something of low height. Nothing of substantial height in that area, but I think it's something in which we can take a peek at.
Okay, so let's check into this for next time, so.
Okay. Well, that could be a condition in which you can add if we're able to get to a vote tonight.
Let's move on.
All right, let me get to a couple of other things.
Okay.
It was mentioned the construction entrance on Cranberry Highway, and it's shown on Shows on sheet three, C-301.
SV, what was it?
301.
301?
Yep.
Which plane is that?
301.
I know.
Would be the soil and erosion control.
Thank you very much.
Sheet three of seven. This project abuts the controlled entrance that goes to the old Walmart, right side of where Eastern Bank is. So you've got a good entrance there, which gives you access to the back of the site. If you look on that plan, they've got a construction exit shown in the very corner of the plan in an area that will have to be abandoned anyway when they do the infiltration basin and the sediment forebay. So that construction entrance is going to be of no value whatsoever. If they moved it over to the proposed driveway and use that, they could continue to use it throughout and not have a construction entrance that's on Cranberry Highway where you've got heavily loaded vehicles either coming in or coming out, trying to make it across that wide expanse in the middle of traffic. It makes absolutely no sense to me at all to allow any kind of construction entrance on Cranberry Highway when you've got a perfectly safe entrance that you can make at the signal. They could go in either direction and have no safety issues whatsoever.
I do agree, especially it's gonna be in New Highway, we don't want to mess it up.
Well, the other thing to take into consideration is that anyone else on the corridor would have access. You're limiting our ability to have construction access there. While we do have the ability to go through Ocean State Job Lot, there's also activity going on in Ocean State Job Lot as well through that access point in which we would have. It's our position that we are asking nothing more than what any other applicant would be asking for in connection with construction access. But I hear your concerns, and I just wanted to make that point. I mean, it's, I think you're looking at it just from one angle. I'm not sure if Kurt or if our traffic engineer may want to pipe in on the position why we believe we should have construction access.
Yeah, and I think this is also something that's going to come up with in discussions with DOT. We have to go to DOT for an access permit anyway, right? And they have to agree on the geometry of our driveway. And at that time, if we'd be discussing construction access, because we have to interface with their construction activities. So if they feel that this is not--
Adequate.
--a safe or an adequate entrance, they'll let us know.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, this makes no sense at all. You know, being a contractor, what kind of vehicles will be going in and out of this site? You're gonna have demolition vehicles going in and out? When they take down the old 99 Restaurant, you're gonna have a truck laden with material that's either gonna go right or it's gonna have to go left? I think in their response to me, they said they would utilize it as a right turn out only. Suppose he has to go left, where does he turn around? It makes absolutely no sense to have a construction entrance at this location when you've got a perfectly controlled entrance right next door. Makes no sense whatsoever. As much as DOT, as much as Mass DOT may say so, it makes no sense.
I have, I have to agree. I'm sorry, I have to agree for construction. I'll ask the board if you want to pull a vote on it, but I do have, what do you think, Chris? For the construction part of it?
I agree with Charlie.
I, Jimmy?
I'm neutral.
Richard?
I believe that the construction site should be in the rear of the building, especially with that new pavement that's out there. We don't want to damage it and start causing heartache and flooding issues, so.
Jake?
Nothing at this time.
And I do believe that for construction, you could live from the back for now.
From the applicant's position, you know, part of what we are obtaining from Ocean State Job Lot is, you know, an agreement to basically access for construction, also access for the drainage, and also access for the ability to utilize those rear portions. That is something in which we can look at, and if it is something which this board wants to put as a condition, that's, that's your pleasure.
Yeah, check on it, please.
I will take another look at the, at the plan that's been provided for the new grades out at Cranberry Highway. It looks like some new grades have been added. I'll have to take a look at that again because it wasn't on the original plan. The wider bailout lane, which is on either one of those, you can see it on sheet 301 or the other plan, doesn't matter. It's a 20-foot wide entrance, but it's not going to be really something that is going to be beneficial to the fire department per se, because they're not going to be able to make a circular route around the building to utilize it. They can get at it from the back, but they'll not be able to get at it from the front because of the canopy that's over the two islands that are there. So I would suggest that maybe they just take that back to the fire department and be sure that that's okay. They can, they can get to that point, but they can't go beyond it.
You're talking about entrances from the back?
They'd have to enter from the back, yes. But the purpose of making it 20 feet, I'm not sure whether the intent was to allow for complete circulation, but you can't get it.
What's the radius?
It was not intended for circulation around the building. It was, it serves as a fire lane next to the building. And the fire code allows you to have fire lanes up to 150 foot without a turnaround. The fire chief asked, or the fire captain asked for it, so we're providing it.
We specifically made changes pursuant to their comments in which they issued and have basically forwarded off to them, and at this point, we have not heard any further comments. It's our position we have satisfied.
If they're happy with it, fine.
All right. So you're concerned for the fire department, so if they're okay with it, you're okay?
All I'm saying, all I'm saying is if they haven't seen this, let them comment and be happy with it. If they have seen it, I don't know whether you have a letter in your file to confirm that, but if they're happy with it, it doesn't bother me.
Like I said, most of these details will gonna depend on the professionals, you know, so like--
We have submitted that to the fire department and permission with our--
Let's get a final, final thing on that plan from them.
And last thing to say is just because it's there doesn't mean they have to use it. That's, this is available to them to use if they choose to fight the fire that way.
Let's get an answer from them. All right, Charlie, I saw in one of your plans about board, like they board for the soil test?
Yes.
They didn't dig perk test, they did like boring?
They took borings. I have an issue with utilizing the evidence that they got from those borings to determine the maximum high groundwater. They used what they call a split spoon sampler. It's a tube about this big around, which they drive down into the soil and at which times they pull it out and they examine the soil type. And at some point during that boring action where they're driving this down into the ground, they hit groundwater, and they report that. That's okay so far as it goes. All that's telling you is where the groundwater was and the date that they did that test. But you cannot evaluate the soil conditions to tell where the maximum high groundwater is just by a boring, because there are soil conditions that you'll only see through a test pit and look at the side walls of a test pit. You can't see it through a little piece of soil that comes up that's this big around as representative of what might be around that hole. So in my view, you've only got an approximation of where the groundwater is. It could be higher, it might be confirmed by the test pits, but I'm not willing to make any recommendation to your board saying that this groundwater determination is okay, because it's not.
Is there a problem to do a regular perk test with a little machine?
Is there a problem? No, there's not a problem. What we used, we used boring information because the DEP, Stormwater Guidelines, allow you to use it. This isn't something, you know, that, that, you know, we're like breaking new ground here. They specifically allow you to use boring information for textural classification and groundwater elevation. So there, so the geotech engineer took five borings on a site that's just a little bit over an acre. And, and so we've got good information to tell us where the groundwater elevation is on these things. And you put, you pull up the split spoon and some of it's saturated and some of it isn't, and so they know just how deep they are. So that information is in the, is in the geotech report, and that's the information that we use. Plus, there's, there's an added factor of safety, because per the geotech recommendation, they, they suggested adding some, you know, just say for design purposes, call it elevation seven, which when we looked at it, seemed entirely appropriate for the elevations that the borings were taken at. I know you've, you've made the point, Mr. Crowley, that the, that the geotech sort of loosely describes the elevation, the surface elevation at the borings of approximately 11. But if you take a look at the actual elevations and then you subtract out the actual depth to the groundwater, you wind up with, the groundwater elevations are all between, between four and a half and six, elevation four and a half and six. The geotech recommended using seven, so we use seven as a design basis, which takes into account seasonal fluctuations. So we felt like we, we were in a really conservative position here in terms of the design. And if we find out that, let's just say we go out there and we sharpen our pencil a little bit and find out that it's not really elevation seven, it's really six and a half, it doesn't really make any difference. It doesn't change the design or the way it functions. The site's a redevelopment, so the standard, the performance standard that we have to design to is to meet the state's standards to the extent practicable. And we have. And in fact, we've, we've, we've done way, you know, we've, we have made a really honest attempt to meet as many of the standards as we could.
All right, let me, let me ask a quick question. Are the standards allowed by the state, the boring standards?
It says that you can use borings. I went and I read the page that they referred to in their reply. I don't have a question about that. It does say so. But let me say this. You can use borings to determine the soil conditions and the groundwater where if you take it as an example, Shangala, Charge Pond Road, where you know that the groundwater is 10 to 15, maybe 20 feet below the surface, if you hit it at that depth, who cares? In this particular instance, you've got groundwater which is close to the surface, and there are enough variations in it, as already mentioned, from four and a half to six. That's a foot and a half difference in variation. And for a few test pits that cost little to nothing compared to what they're gonna charge for building this building, to confirm that and be sure that they've got the proper height, which is a minimum of two feet above the maximum groundwater level, they could do that without any problem at all. And it would, if it turns out to be the same thing, fine. But maybe it won't. Maybe it'll turn out that because of what you see in the, in the test holes tells you that the maximum high groundwater is higher than what they saw that day, you will then have a little bit more flexibility to confirm your design. I don't know how many test pits these gentlemen have done, but I can tell you I've done thousands. And I've also taken the regulations that the state puts out for becoming a soil evaluator, so I know a little bit about what I'm talking about.
I do, I'm gonna ask the boards about this. I do feel, because it's tough, I would like to see the type of soil. I would like to see kind of some holes dug out. I'm gonna ask, Richard, what do you think?
So we're talking about all the water that they're gonna be using to keep it from getting into the groundwater? Is this what the concern is?
The drainage for the park a lot.
The drainage? I mean, if you just go down in that area, you can tell what the groundwater is between the pond and then dirty urnies that are over and back. I mean, the groundwater is close. Is it, is, are they gonna keep anything from getting in and contaminating it? That seems to be what the concern is, right?
Not really. Mr. Rowley talking about is it gonna drain properly or not? Not the contamination. It will have like a some, like catch basin, will have like oil water separator, then it goes to the, but his concern is not gonna drain properly.
You're controlling all your water inside that building. We're just talking about the drain water that's coming from stormwater.
Talking about stormwater.
And you're doing twice as much more that that's there now.
Oh, yeah. And we're taking it out of the highway system and doing so. The site, by the way, is, is, are poorly graded sands, which means all the sands are about the same green size, right? So you've got highly, highly well-draining soils.
And also--
We haven't even--
We're wearing, right? We also haven't given it time to see how it works with all the new construction. I think we're getting a little crazy over all this right now. So I'm all set right now with--
We can take, we can, you know, when we're executing, we have responsibilities to observe the installation of the, you know, during construction anyway. If we see anything that's not right as designers, we don't want to, we need to note as well. And we felt that we had the information with the borings and felt that we could get it, we could do it as a confirmation during construction, because it doesn't really change the, it's not like we're gonna change the design here. We've elevated the site, we've done what we can do.
All right, I wanna, I wanna pass to the public quick. Do you guys want to add something quick before we hear from the public? Just gonna give a chance. Jake, you wanna? I wanna go with the public. Anyone here want to speak in favor of this project? I hear none against. Counselor?
Hi there.
All right, let's hear it.
Attorney Gillian Morton. I don't want to take up too much of your time. I know you have a--
That's fine.
Have a heavy--
I wanna give you double the time.
But they kind of got to say their piece, so I'd love to give my piece. So I submitted an opposition, which I'm sure the board has, and I'd love, I know we kind of went to variance, then we went to your site plan, and we were talking straight up engineer, which I'll--
But just to let you, this isn't gonna end tonight, so we'll have time to come back.
Right, so I'm debating about, should we go into that argument? I have some ideas about, that are pretty relevant to what you were just talking about regarding the borings and some thoughts. Obviously, it's not a secret that I represent another car wash here in town. Well, the only car wash in East Wareham right now. And one of the ideas that we thought would be relevant, he has an engineer and looking into, and number one, the soil borings. And I think it's about standards. And I think it's about standards. Whatever project it is, test pits, that's something that Mr. Rowley, I'm very familiar with on other projects, and it's important to do. Not having that done on the project, I think, would be a disservice. I think they should be held to that standard. So I think that should be a recommendation of the board. One of the other things that wasn't really mentioned, it was mentioned in regards to your comment about the in and out and the traffic. I have a thought and I would love the opportunity to have an independent traffic study done. Other boards and other towns surrounding do this. Other than the applicant who has obviously a traffic study that was done, we'd like the opportunity to be able to do that and then submit that information to you as well. So if the board could look into that as well, I think it's very relevant, this site, it's too much to lose. The traffic should be reviewed. I know they have their plan, but we'd like the opportunity as well to submit that to you. And that would be funded by my client.
So you wanna get an independent traffic study?
Yes.
And your client will pay for it?
Correct.
You could do that, I guess.
We'd like the time and the space people to do that, so that'd be continuing this hearing to allow for that.
Well, the problem with that is that this application's been filed since July. We had a hearing on August 11th, and Mr. McDonough was represented by counsel at August 11th as well as attended himself. And he had ample opportunity to basically engage engineers, consultants, or anyone to submit his position tonight. We are here tonight on applications being filed on July 12th. We have vigorously responded to the board's questions and have basically adhered to providing these comments. I think it's, I think it's too late to the game at this point in order to basically afford an abutter who has been aware of this since day one and has attended a meeting to basically sit on his hands from August 11th until October 13th, as we sit here today, to now ask this for to continue our public hearing to a later date in time so that he can engage those consultants. That should have already been done. It should have already been represented that they are doing so and they're waiting for some. They submitted an opposition letter last week, which does not identify any engineers or anyone who basically supports the speculation in which they have advanced in those letters. I think it's unfair to the applicant to now have to be delayed on a project to which they are in the middle of a purchase and sale agreement with, to delay them further and incur financial hardship as a result of any additional monies in which they may have to entail in order to continue closing dates, things along those lines. I think if the abutter truly wished to basically provide his position, he would have had ample time from August to now to basically hire those consultants and have that report prepared to you. You do not have that tonight. I think it's unfair for the applicant, particularly, and I realize the applicant has indicated in their opposition papers that this is not about competition. This is clearly about competition. This is an abutter who's a mile or so down the road from us, who lives in California, who basically is basically arguing...
Respectfully, Chair, I thought I'd listen to him and I'd like the opportunity to speak, if you may.
You will.
So it's our position this time that that should not, there should not be time afforded for that. The opportunity has come and it has passed. Thank you.
I run it by the board, but I really, personally, I believe that he should have the chance, but do you think he should have the chance, the council, to get a traffic study independent?
They do.
Jim?
But he's had the chance. I think if he has, if he intends to do it, it should be in by the very next meeting.
Mike?
I think...
He should have it by next meeting?
I would accept the report, but I wouldn't necessarily delay.
More than a minute?
Yeah.
Rich?
I agree.
Jake? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, you think, you have to get it by next time?
Not sure if a two-week turnaround can happen, honestly, Mr. Chairman. I think it's very unfair for co-counsel.
Well, you have two weeks.
Yeah. I mean, we can try, but, you know, for me to listen, sit here and listen to their report and then to be interrupted by co-counsel is pretty disrespectful. But I appreciate if we can have two weeks to be able to do that and be able to then speak to the special permit at that time. I would be very thankful for that.
So try to work on and just keep going what you were saying. If you don't mind, counsel, don't interrupt the counsel.
Thank you. So I'd like to respond to some of the comments made through the chair. I was engaged at a later date. There was a prior counsel, and I'm here to really look at our bylaw. And the submission that I did, I don't think there's been much discussion about the special permit threshold. We talked about a variance, which is under a different, is chapter 48 and under a different bylaw. But the special permit is really important. Often we say, well, is it substantially detrimental to the town? There's actually six factors here under our bylaw, right? So that's important. You have to hit all of them. And everyone has to get hit in order for, this is not, I think it's been mentioned by my counsel, my co-counsel, that it's an appropriate use. It's actually only granted by special permit. You are the authority here to be able to make that decision for the town. With opposition on a project, I think it's important for us to be able to have our say. So if we need to use this information at a future time, it's on record that we were, we said, and we had opportunity to be able to give all the information to the public and to the town and to you as the board members. So I went through my opposition, and I don't necessarily wanna go through of it all now, but the things that strike me particularly is that we have to show that this site is appropriate. And it's never been a car wash. It's always been a restaurant. Prior to the 9/9, it was another restaurant. And I feel that this buildingness is, it's been a blighted property. It's no surprise. And as a long-term Wareham resident who drives by it and looks at this ugly structure, I get it. But is it appropriate for the site? Is it proper town planning? That's been mentioned. And when we look at a town at a whole, there are many other locations in town that I think are appropriate. So we, you know, the traffic, hopefully we can do it in two weeks to be able to get that information to you. I think it's very relevant and shouldn't be glossed over. I'm also, and this is a question to you as the chair, concerned about conservation because through the site plan process, don't they get copies of the full site plans and don't they get an opportunity to comment? I don't know if that's been sent back or how that, right? So it goes to the fire department?
We're not gonna discuss conservation.
Okay.
I mean, this is the problem, they have to deal with them.
Right. Right, so the environmental concerns are surely there as well as the flooding. And so I don't, I know this isn't gonna last, you know, just tonight, so thank you and I appreciate you letting me speak on the matter.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Jimmy, what do you think?
I have no comments.
Chris?
I have no comments.
No. Rich?
I do have comments, but I think I'll save them for a later date.
Okay. Anyone in the public wanna speak against this project? Okay. Well, apparently, this isn't gonna end tonight. And like I said before, we wanna, we're gonna, we're gonna depend on the professionals, on the professionals' plans, numbers, reports. And we'll make, I believe all the board will meet on this, and then we'll make that decision accordingly. So we're not gonna say you can, you could do boring and you can't if it's allowed or not allowed. Whatever the rules is, we're gonna follow. We're not gonna say you need 10 shrubs if the landscaping architect says nine is enough. So we're gonna depend on the professionals in this one because there's so much information to absorb. I wanna go back to Charlie, see what he wanna add to this so we could digest for the next two weeks.
I would first ask that you support my request for the test pits. I took out the old set of plans and put on the set of plans, the approximate location of each of the five test borings that were done. If I go back to page 89, which was in the stormwater manual, which was referenced by the applicant's engineer, I think it says that at least two test borings or test pits shall be done in each location of an infiltration area. There are only two borings that even came close to being those infiltration areas, and they're not even on the inside. Three of them are within the footprint of the proposed building, which is fine when you use a pouring for the purpose of determining soils for structural purposes and determining what your foundation's gonna be. I have no problem with borings on that location, but I would request that for consistency and for getting the information correctly so that we have no question as to where the maximum high groundwater is, that the test pits be dug in the locations where the infiltration areas will be shown. And I'm requesting that the board support me on that.
What do you think of the perk test? Can you swing a perk test?
He's not talking about doing perk tests.
I mean, like, instead of boring, we're real dig...
He wants us to dig a hole and take a look at the soil, right? So, yeah, I mean, I...
It's something we have to talk with the client about. It's something in which we will take into consideration whether or not we can get that done between now and the next hearing, but no. We also agree with other board members' position that this is not something that we have complied with all standards, have provided the sufficient information, and this is something that could come up during construction to which we are obligated to basically address and that this is something in which we will, we'll take a look at. I would love Mr. Rowley to identify exactly which areas that he's looking for us to do so that if we do have the ability to do so, we know exactly which areas that he's identifying. Okay, just wanna make sure. I'm not the engineer, so that's why I asked the question, so we know.
That's pretty simple to do, and there's only three areas.
I have a question for, I don't know if it's for the engineer or for the applicant. These pits, it's similar to a perk test, a deep hole with a back hole?
Yeah, but you're looking for certain things, Jim. Yes.
That's what I'm asking. It's just, it's similar to a perk, but you're not pouring water, you're not doing a perk relation, you're just digging a hole.
I wanna find out whether or not there are any indicators...
You jump down in the hole and you look at the layers.
Yes, and I wanna see whether or not there are any indicators there that suggest that the groundwater could be at a higher elevation than what it was on the day that they took those borings.
Except that the design has been done to a higher elevation than what the groundwater was.
The basis of my question is this. At the rate you guys get per hour, and I don't think anybody here is working for 10 bucks an hour, and you've been sitting here for an hour, how many hours would it take to dig these holes? And it might be just cheaper to just dig the darn holes. I didn't say DM because I'm not supposed to swear on TV or in this public meeting. But it seems like a nuisance item here. Dig five or six holes, make the guy happy, look at the ground, it's dirt. Is that, is it a huge expense to the applicant? Is it 500 bucks?
I wouldn't characterize it as a huge expense.
Okay, so I think it's, I think we're arguing over silly, I just wanna make the comment. I think it's just kind of become a silly argument.
No, I understand. If I may, real briefly, Mr. Chair, the test pits is something I will talk to my client about, see if it's something in which we can get accomplished pretty now in the next hearing, so we can provide that information to appease the board with any concerns, because the last thing we wanna do is for this board to have concerns about it. The thing that we have an issue with and a reason that we are resistant is, this is a purchase and sale agreement. This is basically contingent upon us basically proceeding with, in due course, to basically seek a project. I have a competitor who is opposing us that is now requesting for a traffic impact study in two weeks, to which we're gonna have an opportunity to review and respond to, and we're looking at additional testing, to which we have met all standards and compliance with bylaws. We are more than willing to basically do what is necessary. I just feel like for the record, it needs to be clear that there is some stalling tactics going on here, and we're trying to avoid that as much as possible. Not from the board, not from the board at all. And I'm not suggesting that the board has any tactics at all. What I'm suggesting is that we, that's the hesitancy in which we are having, but at the end of the day, we are more than willing to do what the board wishes for us to do. So we will take a look at that between now and the next hearing.
I know what you're saying, but I'm sure you've been to a lot, a lot of hearings in different towns, and some hearings could take six, seven a year.
Oh, I understand, Mr. Chair.
And I'm sorry, I just have to defend that we're doing stalling tactics. I mean, there's been things that have been seen.
I understand. Everybody's gonna speak.
We just want a fair shot, and we wanna be able to get things on the record, so it will be reflected if necessary.
All right. Let's go back to these perk tests. I see this page you've mentioned, 85, whatever page it is, those boring that it, you want the same, the perk test at the same boring location they did?
No.
You want different locations?
It's very simple. Pick two spots in each one of the infiltration areas and dig test pits in each one.
Oh, and infiltration you want them?
That's what, that's what the stormwater regulations say you should do.
Okay, so anyway, you're gonna dig them, so might as well dig them, right?
We understand what he's asking.
All right, let's get a perk test done, soil evaluation done.
And make a motion to continue to the...
Before, before we close, before we continue, let them do, Charlie, you want anything else to go?
Just with respect to one comment that was made about, well, they could adjust it at the time they do construction. That would be way too late. And if perchance, there's a difference that's significant, it's gonna affect all of the grades that you do with the stormwater management system that's on the ground. Way too late to be doing it.
I do agree. If you have a high-water table, it's a little...
Water readings.
I understand. Do you wanna close something before we go?
The only thing, we did finish the variance. I would ask that the board vote on the variance so we can put that matter aside and focus solely on the special permit at the next hearing. I think you all have sufficient information on the variance, and I believe we can go to a vote on that unless the chair thinks otherwise.
I would like to make one vote total variance personally. I mean, what do you guys think? We do one vote at the end?
One vote at the end?
I agree.
I mean, if we, if we vote for a variance now, then the time passes and then we, you have to record it, then we come back special permit. I would say next time.
I wanna make this as easy as possible for the chair as well. I just wanted to identify that that was, it seemed like we were...
We'll argue next time, or I'm personally very convinced with the variance. I think it's a strong hardship, the highway with the taking, but I would say we just do one vote. Do you guys agree? One vote? What do you think, Rich? You could speak your mind. You wanna make a vote now? We'll make.
No, I'm all set.
You're good. Jake?
I'm all set.
Rich?
I'm all set. I'd rather wait. Can we close the public hearing on the variance at the very least?
No, no.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you wanna add anything before we go?
All set.
All right, so we're gonna, the construction entrance, you wanna put it in the back, make a perk test at the catch basins, at the retention ponds, whatever you call them? And I guess the landscaping buffer, whatever that stamp says, if it say it's good to go and the bylaw says, I guess we're gonna stick with the professionals. All right, can I have a motion to continue?
Go move.
I have a motion to continue. Which one is this? And that is 39-20 till the 27. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Jake. All in favor, say aye.
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 Jim?
Aye.
Aye, so 500, we'll see you on the 27.
Great, thank you for your patience and thank you for allowing us to go over the timelines.
Thank you.
Could you send me an email, okay, in the continuance as well, please?
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, counsel.
Okay, which one are you going?
Are you switching clients now?
Are you going to number three?
We're going to...
Number 10 for us?
Herbert, Herbert? Shannon again?
No.
This one. Chef, this is always goes. You need us to plug it again, please?
Yeah, just unplug it. All right, we're gonna go to continue public hearing, 47-21, Stephen Herbert, 2691 Cranberry Highway. Want to come forward, please? All right, public hearing's still open, I'm just gonna need your name and address for the record.
John DiTalia and Steve Hall.
You get, just speak on the mic. Give me that, please, before you say, and then you could go, thank you. Name and address for the record.
John DiTalia, Two Shore Road, Bourne.
Okay. All right, very well, this public hearing's still open. I guess it was publicly announced that we're gonna go visit this matter the other time, and we all did, and we all looked at the plan. If you guys want me to put my two cents first, I could start.
I'd prefer that personally.
All right, here, here, the way I look at it, Mr., I can't call you Steven? Okay, so apparently Mr. Steven had pulled the permit a couple of years ago, right? To pull this wall. Whether it's, whether it's, doesn't meet setbacks, or now he went and did it according, with the building permit. I could understand personally if he did it without a permit, now ask him for forgiveness, but the gentleman has a permit. And I personally think the town gave him the permit, we are a part of the town, I think we should, I mean, unfortunately, this commissioner is not, no longer with us, he moved to a different town, and I really would like to stick to that permit personally and grant this variance. On the other matters with the encroachment, apparently, as you all see, these encroachments are way over 10 years old. These are not, you cannot enforce, do any enforcement of, on them if they're over 10 years. Regarding the, I mean, building, not the encroachment, building on a setback, right on a setback, if that's over 10 years, you can't really do not much about it. Being on the neighbor's property, that's something, it's a civil matter, they have to work it out, the neighbors, whatever they have to do, that's not a problem. So I spoke my mind, I want to start with Chris.
I, I agree, I see his hardship, and I'm okay with the variance.
Jimmy?
I agree, but I'd like to know how you guys made out today as far as.
Well, we decided to do a two-pronged attack like we talked about today. If you've got the letter that's in front of you.
What happened though?
We've engaged.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't make enough copies, sorry, we just did it tonight, so it was pretty quick.
So give us the, give us the Reader's Digest version.
Okay, the Reader's Digest version is that we've engaged a lawyer to, on two things, to talk to the neighbor, to try to either purchase an easement or even the property. And secondly, if that can't be done, to try to, he's gonna go for adverse possession.
Okay.
Go ahead.
That's really all I needed to know on that matter. We're only hearing the variance on that.
Exactly right. I would rather, this is, we're not gonna even discuss, I wish you all the luck with this. We're just gonna discuss the variance.
So, I, I don't have any more questions.
All right, Richard.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Anyone in the public want to speak against or for this project? I hear none. Charlie, you want to say something? No? All right, hearing none, do you want to add anything else? You're good, let's move to close.
Make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
Do you have a second?
Aye, second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, closed, okay. Any discussion?
Make a motion to grant the variance as requested.
All right, we have a motion to grant the variance with the standard condition that it meets the statutory requirement of MGL 40A, section, section 10. Do you have a second on that?
Second, that.
Second by Jake, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All ayes, okay, oppose, abstain, it carries, thank you, you're good.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good one.
Before we move to another one, let's sign this one.
All right, 49-21, TJP Realty, 14 Over Jordan Road.
Give us a minute.
Getting your exercise tonight.
Goodness. Did I read the? You guys both signed it? Yeah, I know, I want to get this one in the, I want to get Chris's signature before I, before I read it. I can't, I can't read and chew bubble gum and put this in the folder at the same time. You want to write? You take the whole folder.
All right, and you can read.
So that says, all together, please, and. Planning office, that would be you. This is yours, exit, please. This is Chris. Zoning Board of Appeals to hold a public hearing on October 13th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 49-21 for a special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 621, and Article 13, Section 1355, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, to TJP Realty LLC, care of Julian Morton Esquire, of 184 Main Street, Wareham, Mass., proposing to raise the existing dwelling and reconstruct a new single-family dwelling on the same site located at 14 Over Jordan Road, Wareham, Mass. That appears on assessors map 20 lot 1017-B in the R60 zoning district.
All right, let's hear it.
Hi, Attorney Julian Morton, 184 Main Street. I have a submission, which an address that you should, be familiar to you, this is that property over, and over Jordan Road, and it is the existing structure. A few months ago, ooh, time flies, the other two structures were knocked down, and my client needed to obtain variances in order to build those single-family houses on the property. Now we have the property in the middle, still has the existing house on it. So we went through the process with the building commissioner, and he decided because it was existing non-conforming, that it needed a special permit in order for this new build. And as you can see through the plans, these are the same ones that you saw before, they're gonna be these beautiful houses raised up, you know, being able to look at the water over there. And my submission goes through all the standards, and hopefully you've reviewed that and you can decide that this is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, and that the build, I mean, there were three cottage small houses, tear downs there, this one's still being there, and the house is there, to be able to get this special permit approved for my client so we can move forward with the construction of all three of those. So I welcome any questions, but you can see from the inspector's letter that it is a special permit, it's not at that variance threshold because the building is still there.
All right, very well, yeah, I could see this letter. However, the inspector says, because it's an existing non-conforming structure, if the board feels so is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, we could act on it as a special permit. That's what he's saying in Article 13, Section 1355.
Yep, because the structure is still there on this site, it's the middle one, you approved 12 and 16 already.
I want to start with Chris. Chris, what do you think?
So our table 621, it says a requirement setback to 60 feet, how, what is the setback?
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
The, the setback for the front yard, it says our requirement is 60 feet, what are you guys proposing?
The, oh, okay. Does not comply with the front yard setback, let me check on that.
Yeah, we have, we need a variance for 60 foot for the setback, because it's.
I think because it was.
Because it's pre-existing non-conforming.
Right, so through the chair, because it was exist, and that structure is still there, if we were to tear it down, we would, like the other ones, have to get the variances for the setbacks. If you go to the big plan, I guess we can find what you're looking for in regards to the actual setback. Recall on, not the architectural, but site plan, it shows the existing structure and then the new structure, so you'll be able to see what the difference is. So it's a big one.
Get that, Chris? What happened is they don't have the 60-foot front, it's an existing non-conforming, and like I said, if the board feel it's substantially detrimental, then the board will act upon it as a, as a variance versus a special permit.
So.
All right, Jimmy, what do you think?
I think we've been over this with this owner, the properties owned by the same owner on either side of it, abutting it, and our future, our future, our previous actions kind of pretty much paved the way for this to be a five-minute hearing, and we should grant relief and move on to the next person.
Richard?
I agree.
Jake?
I agree as well.
All right, anyone in the public want to speak in favor against this matter? I hear none. You want to close an argument, you're good.
Unless you want one.
Make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
Do I have a second on closing?
Aye, second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye.
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 Same, so it's closed.
Make a motion to approve as presented with standard conditions.
Does the board feel so we can give them a release?
As a special permit.
As a special permit, so Jimmy has a motion that we act on this matter as a special permit because it's not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, so we act on it as a special permit. Do I have a second on that?
Aye, second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, okay, so 500, special permit, now what's the wishes?
I make a motion to grant.
All right, I have a motion to grant by Jim with the standard condition, as the plan presented by GAF Engineering 217, 2020, yep, with the standard conditions. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Chris, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain.
Will you, will you prepare the?
Absolutely.
So we'll, we'll sign that at the office, thank you.
Very good.
We've occupied enough of our time tonight.
I'm here again.
I know, I know you're coming back. Like a cold, you can't get rid of it.
You can't.
Could I have those back, please?
All right, next on the agenda, 50-21, Salvador, Salvadore, and that is 15 South Boulevard. You're done? Oh, you, you still here?
I'm waiting for him to read it.
She's just, no.
Are you, are you on this one too?
Yes.
She's on this one too, you know, she's like one-stop shopping. You know the one-horse town and the, and the one barber shop town? This isn't a one-lawyer town.
All right.
Zoning Board of Appeals to hold a public hearing on October 13th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 5121 for a special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 622, and Article 13, Section 1352, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Randall J. and Diane M. Riva, care of GAF Engineering, 266 Main Street, Wareham, Mass., proposing to remove the existing deck on the rear of the dwelling in order to construct.
Sorry, that's the incorrect hearing.
You're reading the wrong one?
Yeah, it's, um, the.
What are we after? Which one?
Salvador.
50-21.
15 South Boulevard.
50-21.
Sorry about that.
You don't represent this one, let's go to that one.
You're doing such a good job of reading, do you want to try again? 51-21. Don't tell me you did that one too.
Right, right after that.
Zoning Board of Appeals to hold a public hearing on October 13th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 5021 for a special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 622, and Table 628, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, Angelo and Melody Salvador, is that correct? Care of Julian Morton Esquire, of 184 Main Street, Wareham, Mass., proposing to raise the existing dwelling and reconstruct a new, more non-conforming, single-family dwelling structure on the same site located at 15 South Boulevard, Wareham, Mass., assessors map 1 lot 66 in the OB2 zoning district.
All right, let's hear it.
All right, Attorney Julian Morton, 184 Main Street. So make sure everyone has their packets there, so I represent the Salvadore's in their proposed build. I always like to start these with kind of going to the commissioner's letter, so then you can, you can take a look at, you have it? Exhibit C in your little packet. So you can take a look at what we're looking at here on this application. This property is 15 South Boulevard, that might sound familiar to you, a lot of the new rebuilds in Onset, particularly in this area, which is on the bluff, and great area, very tight lots there, but a lot of new constructions and renovations happening, which is really exciting for Onset Village. Now on Ms. Raquina's letter, you can see there are five items listed, special permit or variance. Now, what we wanted to do was be able to look at our plans, and you can see this was back in July, but we were able to change some of the things, and in my letter I go through that there are actually two that should, are not relevant anymore because we've, we've taken care of those. So really, the ones we're looking at are 622 Villa District, the building coverage, and the small lot, the FAR, and the side yard setback. Those are the three that I've mentioned, the other, talking about impervious coverage, we're actually doing shelves, that's, you know, something that we've, we've reviewed, so the impervious coverage won't be hit, as well as the new non-conformity of the rear setback, so that was altered as well. So we're looking at those three, so I'm not sure if it's easier for everyone to kind of then go to those plans and talk through what, you know, what we're doing here in terms of FAR, building coverage, and the amount that we're looking for on variances. In the submission too, I've, and this is probably one of your plans too, Anthony, the, I have the existing building coverage and the proposed, that's on page four of my memorandum, and that was pretty helpful because then you can see what the changes are with the existing building coverage and then what were the proposed building coverage. So we are raising that building coverage up, the purpose being to make it a usable house for my clients. This house, some of the houses down there are historical, this house, I would say, was a smaller cottage and then was kind of almost jigsawed together, different pieces, different parts added to it, so it's really not functional for, for a family there. And so that's something that we're looking to do. We have some renderings that Anthony has prepared to show you, which show the proposed builds, being very sweet and very charming for Onset Village here. So it has kind of the double deck there, and it shows a nice garage. Do we have bigger pictures of the existing, or I have them in, I guess, the proposal?
The existing house?
Yeah. You don't have the existing, okay. Maybe we can, trying to think if I have that in my submittal, maybe we can just show them so they're kind of, they're seeing where it is. This is next to a property that another variance was awarded to, a historical property, so it's right on kind of the peninsula over there on South Boulevard, right behind the house, the whole asset, where it to be renovated, the historical house, it's right behind it. So you can see what the site looks at like, and you can see it's almost different, it's like almost modular, there's different pieces that were built. So when preparing this, we understand that this is a area that is heavily populated, right? People, everyone wants to enjoy the view over there in Onset. So we took special consideration, there was a lot of time and thoughtfulness that went into this, including in the improved views for some of the abutters, for people on the other side of the street, and Anthony has those pictures of kind of the cones of what the view would be, and showing those to abutters so they would understand what was going on. I received an abutters letter regarding, that I can, I can give to one of the members if they'd like to read, Anthony has the cones too, which show those visuals, but that's one of the concerns, seeing if someone would, their view would be blocked, they've lived there for many years, and it's not fair, even though there aren't really water view rights right there, but we want to take that in consideration. So hopefully you guys can kind of, give you some time to look, look through that material. We're looking at the variance standard, if it's, if you do choose to go special permit or variance, and you can see that the, the commissioner has kind of put or, and/or, and so I'd like maybe a vote regarding the substantial detriment, if you think it's the, the special permit threshold or is the variance threshold, then I'll be able to argue accordingly. But I'll, again, I'll give you a little bit of time and then answer some questions, just, there's a lot of material, I just want to make sure you take a look at it.
Let me ask you a quick question.
Sure.
In the plans, in the impervious, you, you don't barra from 56 to 50?
Correct, so that's why it's white from the letter, or.
That's why I hear.
Right, why I said, okay, there's five here, we're actually looking at three, we're looking at FAR.
FAR right now.
The existing.
37, presumably.
FAR. FAR is, oh, you have everything right there.
Going from forty to ninety-five percent.
Yeah, it's going up quite a bit. But it is, it's under that small lot threshold.
And the rear setback, 25, six point three.
Rear setback?
So which are you referring to?
Well, he's looking at the rear setback.
That rear setback required is 10 feet, the existing's 25, and we're, we're going to 6.3 feet.
Where is the rear lot line?
The address is 15 South Boulevard, but it has frontage on Pleasant as well as South Boulevard, so which are you?
So it doesn't have a rear lot line, it has side lot lines.
That's, so that's a good visual, right, of the existing? This was the view chart, you can see the cones there.
This is the existing house, that's pre-existing, non-conforming.
Got to use the microphone, ma'am.
For the record, my name is Anthony Franchiotis, I'm the architect working with the applicant on the project. The existing structure is on the left, it's pre-existing, non-conforming. On the South Boulevard, which is the southerly property line. We have a setback at 1.9 feet. And on the easterly side yard line, we have sheds and shower.
You can drag that mic with you if you want. Feel like Perry Como.
I don't know, I think I'm much farther. Yeah.
Looks like the match game microphones.
You can drag the easel this way too, you know? The mountain won't come to Mohammed.
There you go.
So, do you want to, through you?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm still a little foggy. There's an old building down there that just about occupies 100% of the lot, as you kind of go around the curve. Is that in that picture? Like it was a hotel or something?
Talking about the Gomes property.
Is that right underneath your hand? That, that building?
The one that's currently on the market?
That's, okay, I'm just trying to get it in my head where we are. So behind that building, there's a street between, is that that little narrow street that goes right above?
This is, this is South Boulevard.
Yeah, okay.
This is the large Victorian with the tower that we all think of as Onset Village.
I'm, I'm trying to figure out.
Avenue.
Yeah.
And the house is behind the former hotel building.
Yeah.
Both of those structures are two feet from the property line, so that's a.
But there's no street between them?
No, this is a pre-existing non-conformity for both structures.
So, but it's currently 25 feet, they're 25 feet apart, and now they're going to be four feet apart, is that what?
No, 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 no. They're currently two feet apart on this, on this property line.
So where's the 25-foot setback that's going to become a 6-foot setback? There's a current 25-foot.
The minimum rear setback?
No, we don't have a.
The back is 25.
And so that is, so that's the frontage, is that your front address?
No, the, so, the frontage is right here.
Is that?
Eleven point eight three feet on South Boulevard.
So they claim their frontage, they claim an 11-foot frontage, which is, is a substantive frontage, no matter what the zone is, and they claim that as their frontage, and they claim the, the street with, with a lot of frontage as their rear.
That's what the.
That's the way the post office did it?
That's what the street address says. I, I don't know how this was, this is pre-existing, non-conforming, way before anywhere.
Okay, I'm just, yeah, that's why I was totally, now I get it a little bit. I guess if the post office says that's the front, who am I to argue with the post office?
I think we were told by the commissioner that you can pick which you want your front address on, I believe, when we were looking at one on Onset Avenue.
That plan makes it a little, you know, makes the mud a little bit, you know, more like mortar.
So what we have is the setback line on this site plan with the existing structure, and you can see the existing structure violates the setback.
Yeah, I get it now.
In many different, in many different conditions.
And the new structure is the, is the, is the drawing right to the right of it?
Yes, and the proposed structure, and part of what we were looking at with the view corridor diagrams, is that we're actually pulling this side yard setback back.
Giving us three feet and taking 25.
With the garage, yes.
We trade nickels for dollar bills every day.
The garage is actually conforming to the setback, because on Pleasant Avenue, we have the average of five setbacks, so we have a 10.3 setback here. This side yard line is what is being referred to in the commissioner's letter, where we're going from nine something feet.
Yep.
To 4.1 feet. So, and part of that is to claim some of the outdoor space, as well as, in previous, previous submissions.
Keep interrupting you, and I'm sorry, but one more question.
Okay.
So I'm looking at the North Arrow, so the east border where you're, where you're reducing the set, side setback, what's on the abutting property? What's on?
There's an existing str, there's an existing cottage.
Is it a residence, is it a commercial, what is it?
It's an existing residential cottage.
Cottage, okay. And those people have been notified, they have the opportunity to be here.
Everyone's been notified.
Okay, I'm done with all my interrupting.
And that the large property you were asking about wraps around.
Right.
Yep, that's what I was trying to figure out, okay.
That's that corner.
Thank you.
All right, very well. Chris, what do you think? You want me summing up for you?
So this is a total tear down and a rebuild, right? Seems like you're, there's still a lot of non-conformities here. Wouldn't you want to conform more to our bylaws?
Well. Through the chair, I would argue that, especially Onset, as we know, things are going to be changing regarding the bylaw. This, this site, more than ever, is being built up, the influx of people realizing since the pandemic that they want it to be their home, so these are all older cottages, this one being it was an older cottage, and then they kind of tack things on, then they said, okay, we, you know, if we want to be here, we need to make it livable. So I think we're seeing a lot more of those, so we do have a current bylaw, but this being non-conforming, non-existing, non-conforming, we're able to use a special permit threshold, but I, I think in the future there will be a change regarding this area, for sure.
All right.
One of the pieces that's particularly unique to this lot is the fact that the existing lot is 3,900 square feet, and it has an existing dwelling on it, which is already non-conforming to our existing setbacks. In terms of the architectural character of the existing structure, it's completely out of line with Onset Village.
Right, can you share your, your rendering again with the porch?
Sure. So the, the existing structure is vinyl siding, and has been added onto many times in the past, with no thought really given to the neighborhood or the abutters. In this particular case, we spent quite a bit of time working with the massing within a, a smaller than usual lot. So Onset is full of small lots, this one in particular is 3,900 square feet, and when you look at that floor area ratio, the new footprint of the house is approximately 1,500 square feet. It's not a, it's not a lot when it comes to new homes. In terms of getting a first floor master, getting a kitchen living space, that people, people want to enjoy being on the waterfront. So the Pleasant Avenue side, which is this side, is the side that we looked to keep lower. All of the existing structures along Pleasant Avenue are about a one and a half story with this E height. We made a point to keep the garage door off of Pleasant Avenue, we made it a point to put it onto the side yard, so that you can put your kayaks and your boats away, you can put your jet ski away, without it being in the, in the front yard, if you're considering Pleasant Ave, the front side. In addition, we have the existing hotel that completely blocks the view of the beach. So in this particular case, to benefit from the fact that we have water view property, we're really looking to the west for the view, and you still have a fabulous view. And the fact is that there's a two-story structure right here, that's two feet from our property line, the existing structure that we're replacing is two feet from the property line, so there is no real reason to change that. It's a pre-existing non-conformity, and we're keeping that pre-existing non-conformity. What we were doing is meeting the setback on Pleasant Ave. While we're increasing the non-conformity to the side, we feel as though that benefits the neighborhood by improving people's views. And currently, when you look from Pleasant Avenue towards the beach, it's not a pretty sight. There's a, and I'm sure Amy's not offended, but there's a satellite dish on the roof, there's vinyl siding, there's no windows, it's completely out of proportion. We're adding big overhangs, we're adding brackets, porches and materials that are more in character with.
Right.
Onset Village.
All right, all right, this is where we're up to. We have three existing non-conforming issues, the building coverage, that's existing non-conforming. If the boards feel a special permit, it's not so much detrimental, we could act on it as a special permit. The second one, the floor area, the FAR, also that's existing non-conforming, although it's going to 95 and a half percent, it is non-conforming. If the board feels it's not so detrimental to the area, we could act on it as a special permit. The third one, the setback, the rear, the side yard setback, it is also existing non-conforming, same idea, if they, we could, under 1355, if you believe it's not so detrimental, then we could act upon it as a special permit. The only thing is, the rear setback, you're not existing non-conforming, you need a strict variance. So, we want to hear how much, how many?
This one?
Yeah, you, you have, you have 25 feet, you're going to 6.
Which are, which property run are you referring?
The rear yard setback, you have 25 feet, you're asking to bring it down to 6.3. Where's your rear, rear yard? Whatever you call rear, you call the front the 11 feet, so the back over there, the road, the other road, Pleasant Street, is it?
That's front and you're on one street, you got the back, the other street's the Pleasant Street side, right?
Up there, top, top, yeah. Right now, yeah, you have 25 feet setback now, you're going to, you want to bring it down to 6.3.
No, we're proposing it to 10.3.
Yeah, he might have been looking at a different plan. It's still, it, it would be.
That was the one that was eliminated.
10, okay, so we have the wrong.
And 10 is the correct?
Yes.
What's this letter from the commissioner? Is that a different letter from the commissioner from July 20?
So what ended up happening is, we're using the letter from July 20th, and two of his items, we redesigned the building to address them. So the six points, I apologize, the 6.3 is actually, we made a conformance.
Oh, the rear, yeah. Yeah, if you go to my.
That one is no longer.
Memorandum, it says all three.
No longer you want the variance, the other ones.
Building coverage, FAR.
They exist and non-conforming unless the board feels otherwise, right? Kind of? The FAR coverage and side.
Side yard setback, yep, that's what's in my.
That being said, let's get going. Anyone from the public want to speak in favor of this project?
I do have a letter, if you, if you want to pass this along. Do you want to read it?
Anyone against this project? That's always good to have.
It's my only copy, but that's all right.
You got a letter from, you want this read in, or you want it just to read as digest?
I'd love you to read it in.
Okay. To whom it may concern, my name is Barbara Mallett, and I am the owner of home at 17 South Boulevard that shares a property boundary line with 15 South Boulevard. The owners of 15 South Boulevard, Angelo and Melody Salvadori, are petitioning to raise the current structure and obtain a special permit and or variance in order to reconstruct a new single-family structure at 15 South Boulevard. The owners have personally shared with me their plans for raising the current structure and building a new home, and also have shown me some of the structural issues related to the current house that make raising of the property and rebuild more logical solution than attempting to repair the current issues. The new structure will be more in keeping with the character of the village of Onset, and will add value to the surrounding properties. Their plans will not obstruct the view of any of their neighbors, and will potentially enhance the view of one specific neighbor. I am in absolute agreement with their plan, and believe that the special permit and variance should be granted. Thank you for taking my perspective into consideration for this very appropriate petition for special variance. Barbara Mallett, 17 South Boulevard. It'll go in the file.
Richard, do you have a question?
So I see that they're encroaching on the, would be the right side, towards the, when you come down, you get to Pleasant Street, and then you have, I guess, the right side. What they're trying to do is give some more view, so they're encroaching that to four feet, so.
Right.
I, I think.
Encroaching the setback.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, for them to be moving it and giving an area, I don't think that they could go and get the 10-foot and make this property workable, so.
So you're okay with it?
I guess I'm, I'm okay with them encroaching on that.
Jake?
At the moment, I'm okay with this.
What do you think, Jim?
I think, you know, we've given a few people a hard time over in this area, but I, you know, I, I look at the area, I think it's appropriate, and no, nobody's here from the neighborhood yelling foul. I think that's what this board exists for, it's going to improve the area, it's going to improve everybody in the neighborhood's value. I'm in favor.
Chris, last thoughts?
I, I guess I'm all set, just my, my question is, you got the garage door not facing Pleasant, you got 16 feet wide, you got enough room to, I guess, to bend there and turn with the garage, I guess you do. 16 feet there, I'm going to try to back it in and out.
They can use dollies.
It's a one, it's a one lane per putt, and the intent is to use it for both steroids and small vehicles, not the typical 24-foot back out of the garage.
Seems that you don't have.
And now they currently park, I think, five vehicles in the yard. So they are adaptive, maneuvering vehicles.
I'm okay.
On a standard size.
Make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing?
Okay, I have a motion to, do you want to, anything before we close, counselor?
No, I thank you for your time.
All right, I have a motion to close, do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Richard, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Okay, on the three, three issues, FAR, coverage and setback, how does the board feel detrimental or not detrimental, so we could act on it as a?
I'm hoping it's non-detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay, so you want, okay, so, so you want to act on it as a special permit?
I do.
All right, do you have a second on that?
I second that.
Second by Jake, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, oppose, abstain, so that's special permit. Any discussion now, what's the wishes?
I make a motion to grant a special permit and grant relief for the three items outlined in the building commissioner's letter.
Okay, and the findings, not, it's not so detrimental to the neighborhood?
Standard conditions, non-detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay, very well, I have a second on that.
I second.
Second, I just want to add, it has to be built according to plans drafted on 6/24/2021 by William Madden. I have second by Richard, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, carries, thank you. Guys all set, thank you. Oh, I don't want that.
Okay. Keeping it all straight.
You don't need my package.
Thank you.
No, I don't have to have your copies, I'm going to do. Have the copies back from the members unless they, thank you.
Counselor, you make the draft?
Yes.
You're going to make it?
Yeah, you can assume that.
All right, the special permit, then the special permit, two drafts.
After you get done with all those drafts, it's going to be kind of cool.
I got it.
All right, thank you.
Are we sticking to the schedule?
I believe so.
Riva.
I don't have any birthday parties in.
51-21 Riva. 51-21 REVA, special permit or variance on 10 Captain Collins Drive.
We're ready to have this one already. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on October 13th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571 to consider petition number 5121 for a special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 622 and Article 13, Section 1352 of the Wareham zoning bylaws. To Randall and Diane M. Reva, care of GAF Engineering and of 266 Main Street, Wareham, Mass. Proposing to remove the existing deck on the rear of the building in order to reconstruct a larger deck with a new enclosed portion on the east side that does not currently exist. Additionally, he is proposing the staircase to the second floor balcony area located at 10 Captain Collins Drive, Wareham, Mass, assesses map, 2, it'll be 2nd and District.
All right, very well, name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Randall Reva. My wife Diane Reva is also here.
Okay, and tell us what you're doing.
Okay, we are the owners of 10 Captain Collins Drive in Onset, Mass. And we are the third generation of owners of the property. My grandfather bought it in the early 60s, my father in the 70s, and we recently purchased it about three years ago. We recently got approval from the Wareham Commission, Conservation Commission on approvals and we have the recorded order of conditions on file with that commission and board. Our lot consists of a double lot. There's one of three lots on the street where one of them, we have the privilege of being one of the three lots. We have onsite parking for approximately six cars. Existing right now is a deck on the outside of our port, our house. Right now, it faces the water. It's approximately 12 by 18 and we are enhancing that to the dimension of approximately 12 by 19 and 1/2. And that porch right now is an open-end porch, open-air porch. We plan to screen that in for health reasons in the family and also for bugs and mosquitoes during the summer months that are pretty active on the beach areas with the triple E and West Nile virus also. Our proposed deck will be, I've got three sets of sliders right now on the beach that are just standing there with nowhere to go. And we are currently trying to build a same-sized deck as the one we proposed on the screen porch of 19 feet by 12 feet. Originally, the house in that same location had a wraparound porch that was, it's going to be on the same side as our proposed deck. And actually, there's footings in there right now, old footings that you can see on the property that will be in approximately the same location of footings we're putting in right now. Right now, we make careful planning with our neighbors as not to interrupt any water views, which we have done. And in doing so, we have all the butters signed off and, we have, our butters, into the butters of us, signed off in support of our project. I have a list right here, if anybody wants to see them.
Yeah, we'll look at them.
You have them, okay, all right. And then also, so our deck that we propose will be an open-air deck. So one will be a screened-in porch with a roof on it and the other one be open-air deck. And basically, that's about it. We have a set of stairs that we want to put up adjoining our house that goes up to a second-floor balcony for a second egress. And also, we have a stairwell in the inside right now that is very difficult to put furniture up and it's a very winding stair and it is kind of dangerous still also, so. We propose that, and that's basically it.
Do you have any architectural plans? Do you have any architectural plans for the, what you had, no?
On the deck.
You have a letter in the file dated July 19, 2021 from David Flannin, the building commissioner. And so, and she can relieve from Article 68622 for building coverage. The building coverage only goes up from...
21.
Existing building coverage is 21.21 and we're only going up to 25.41. There's a threshold at 20, so we're very close to that.
So the only...
And we're reducing the total coverage on the lot, which was an exercise that we went through with the Conservation Commission. So, and with the agreement of the butters and the butters to the butters in support of this project, I think it's an easy decision to treat this as a special permit.
Okay, so the only thing you're asking, if the board feels so not detrimental as a special permit, the building coverage? Or the FAR?
That's correct. I need to point out on the side setback that the plan is missing a dimension. So we don't conform with the 10-foot side setback, but we're not increasing it on conformity. Right where that existing outside shower is and platform on the deck, there's a bump out, an entryway there. So that sideline, there are only, there's been about four feet of it. And the new stair is 6.7 feet off.
Right, I could see that shaded gray dot, is this the envelope?
That's an existing bump out that should have been identified as the closest current sideline setback.
6.7?
No, it's about four right now. 6.7 is for the new stairway platform.
Okay.
So that's what I'm saying is there's, you know, we're showing 11 and 1/2 which is the same as the side of the house, but there's an outside shower in, an entryway there.
Oh, okay.
There's probably four, let's call it five feet off.
What's a side setback there, 10 or 5?
It's 10.
Okay, that gray line, the dotted one, is this the envelope? Is that, that's 6.4? That's the average one you're showing, the 6.4 feet?
Well, adjacent, so the average of the five adjacent structures is showing a 6.4 feet, so that's correct.
All right, so the setback is an existing non-conforming, you're saying the existing one?
Yeah, I think that's maybe just something that Mr. Repriet didn't pick up in your view of this. You know, we had him update this letter, but, you know, I don't think it's a problem. We certainly request the approval of the plan as presented and to be treated as a special permit.
As the stairs, no, you're gonna, these stairs?
Correct, the dark shading, so there's a balcony from the second floor that's just like a little walk type situation.
Right.
You want to add a platform and stairs.
All right, but right now, there's nothing?
Correct.
So right now, you have 11 and 1/2 feet setback, right?
No, right now, it's, again, it's...
Oh, the shower?
Right, correct.
Okay.
Right by the shower, there's an entryway and...
All right, okay. That helped you out, that shower. All right. Let's go to Chris, what do you think?
So, the outside shower's staying, right? Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
And then there's a side entrance?
You have these photographs?
Can you let him speak, please? Go ahead, Chris.
There's a side entrance door right there, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, are the stairs going to be, what's that other projection that goes out at the top?
So where you see the railings is the, that walk where we're going to put the platform for how the stairs come down. So how would you describe that, Randy?
Well, the stairs are going to come right up to here, over here. It's going to go above that bulkhead.
So, yeah, above, above there.
Above that bulkhead, the stairs, yeah.
Platforms.
Right, that's what the stairs, right.
And the stairs are going to go down on the other side.
Go away from the view.
And then you're adding that front porch and you're going to put a roof on it and close it?
Well, the existing, the existing deck right now is going to be enclosed. I have an existing deck.
Existing deck's going to be enclosed, but the new deck you're putting on, it's going to be open?
Open space, yes, yeah.
I get it, I'm all good, I'm all set.
Jimmy?
I'm all set.
I'm all set.
Jake?
Nothing at this time.
I'd like to see if there's anybody here from the neighborhood.
Yeah, anyone in the public want to speak against or in favor of this project?
Yeah, so they all signed this petition, which I emailed to the office, so if you want to favor property...
All my natural butters and their butters signed in favor of my project on the street. You want to read them all?
We don't need to read them, but I'm happy to put it in the fold as, you know, unless you want a copy of it for yourself. Do you have a copy?
Yeah, we did, and we said we'd email it.
You do have a copy? I just think for the record that we can comment that there's 1, 2, 3, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19. These are all, oh, these are all copies.
Those are all of my natural, yeah, those are my natural butters.
I folded my $20 bills in half and came up with $40.
Yeah. Well, those are my natural butters.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 people have signed.
All right, so the existing deck, you're gonna enclose a screen?
Screen, yeah.
And you're gonna build a new deck to the right or to the left, whichever way?
Mr. Chairman, I find this very similar to a prior applicant. Again, it's the same neighborhood, it's not detrimental, the whole neighborhood wants it. Why belabor the point?
So make a motion.
I make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Richard, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, close.
I make a motion that this be treated as a special permit.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second now.
He's second, Jake's second. All in favor say aye.
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 I make a motion that we approve the plans as presented by GAF Engineering dated April 14th, 2021. Latest revision, 61621.
Do I have a second on that?
I second.
Second by Richard, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
You oppose?
Nope. I'm for it, sorry.
You for it?
I'm for it, yes.
Okay. So it's aye, all ayes, 500, carries, thank you.
We voted for a special permit.
Thank you.
Oh, um, yeah, special permit, thank you. Can I have the copies in, please?
Sorry about that, Jake. Did you see the signature, please?
Signature page. Give everybody a five-minute break while we sign this.
All right, next hearing, 52-21 Lapham and 8 Angel Cove Way.
Get their signatures there.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on October 13th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in the room 320 of the Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571 to consider petition number 5221.
Hello, excuse me, hello?
You're making too much noise back there, we can't hear you. You either have to speak louder or we have to stop talking. No, wait a minute, reverse that. Thank you.
All right, go ahead, sorry again.
Consider petition number 5221 for special permit from the requirements of Article 3, Table 320, Article 3, Section 340.2 and Article 14, Section 1460 under the Wareham zoning bylaws for Arthur and Pamela Lapham proposing to add an animal kennel to their existing dwelling at 8 Angel Cove Way, Wareham, Mass. Assesses map 43, lot 1028 in the MR30 zoning district.
Sir?
Good evening, my name is Dennis Conroy, I'm an attorney in Wareham. My office at 245 Main Street, Wareham. I'm here tonight in behalf of Arthur and Pamela Lapham, reside at 8 Angel Cove Way, Wareham, Mass. Where they live and are currently residing with their seven dogs. Arthur and Pamela Lapham moved into the single-family residence at 8 Angel Cove Way with their seven dogs when they purchased the property December 14th, 2019. The property at 8 Angel Cove Way consists of a single-family residence and it attached two car garages situated on a two-acre parcel. Board members are invited to look at the photographs, which are worth a thousand words, I guess, you know. So it's a, I personally couldn't believe that site existed. I drive down to Cranberry Highway every single day and I looked at it and I couldn't figure out where is this property located? It's, you know, but I digress. Shortly after purchasing the property, Arthur and Pamela attempted to obtain licenses for each of their seven dogs at the Wareham Town Clerk's Office. Arthur and Pamela were informed that they could license the dog for the current year, but they would need to obtain a special permit to operate an animal kennel at 8 Cove Way. Upon further inquiry of the building department, the zoning enforcement officer, the commissioner, provided a letter dated July 27th, 2021, this included in our materials, stating that the Laphams would be required to apply for a special permit from the zoning board of appeals for a kennel license in order to house more than three dogs in their home. The applicable section of the building code is 340, Section 2, animal kennels harboring and/or care of more than three dogs for three or more months per year. The Laphams are not seeking permission to build any structure outside of their residence which would house the dogs, the dogs that actually live in the house with them. In addition, they're not requesting any permission to house any dogs that they don't own. The Laphams only want to be able to house their dogs in their home for which activity the building department has determined they need a special permit from this board. The criteria that the Laphams need to reach or meet are well-known to this board, but they're referenced in my submission. The applicants submitted their property and the proposed use of their house as a kennel to house their personal dogs meet all the conditions of a special permit and requested the board of appeals issue a special permit to allow them to use their house to harbor and care for their three dogs. The, one of the key issues here, and I do have some more, one more photograph that I'd like to circulate to the board. Is there a coyote? There are coyotes in this neighborhood. Probably most neighborhoods in Wareham. But in order to protect the dogs from the coyotes, since the taking of the first pictures, the Laphams have put up a chain, or not a chain, a stockade fence for a portion of the backyard. So this is, you know, very private secluded area. It's, actually, Arthur has a band that he plays in and you'll notice that there's a garage that he and his bandmates practice in. Nobody in the neighborhood can even hear them play the band down there in this isolated corner of the world. So I submit that the Laphams are both here tonight with me and can answer any questions that you might have. Seems pretty straightforward to me, but I'd be happy to answer any questions or have them answer any questions that you may have.
All right, very well, Chris, what do you think?
I'm glad you handed me this last photograph. That was my first question, I was going to ask if there was any fence. So I'm all set, I'm good.
Good, Jimmy?
I think that I'd be okay with this, but I'd like to know if the dogs are going to breed and if we can be assured that they'd be limited to seven dogs and no more than seven dogs.
We can condition the special.
It's going to be my condition, but I'd like a nod from the owners. Okay, I got it. I got what I wanted, they nodded.
Oh, okay.
So we're limited to seven dogs?
I'd agree, it'd be seven dogs, never anymore. If there was a litter of dogs...
If there was a litter of dogs, either the adults would have to go so the babies could stay, or the babies would have to go within 30 days. That 30 days gives them enough time to, do the dogs breed? They don't breed, so it's not a problem. Okay.
I too have grown up in that neck of the woods and never even realized that that road was down there, and as I drove down there yesterday, I was blown away, I mean, you've got deer in your yard, and they weren't even scared of me. I got out, I walked around a little bit, and that deer stood right there and looked at me, so it's like one of the most calming little areas down there, and the closest people to you would probably be across the river over on the end of Noel's Avenue, right? And it was very quiet, didn't seem like there was a nuisance going on over there, and again, I've never been over there, been up and down, I didn't realize that that little stretch of property was over there. It was amazing, I was blown away. My address, I kept coming up Rogers Avenue, Rogers Avenue, I'm like, I drive in and all of a sudden I see a sign that says Angels Cove Way. I said, unbelievable, I've been to weddings at that church, I've never ever really been down that road. I'm amazed. So, good luck, and again, just seven dogs is a lot, but it's definitely quiet down there.
They don't have any kids, though.
Hey, I believe the dogs are easier than kids.
Yeah, can feed themselves. Jake, what do you think?
I'm okay with this.
You're good? All right, anyone on the public want to speak against or favor? I hear none, let's close. Do you wanna do anything, say anything, counsel before we close?
I have nothing further to say.
Make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jake, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, close, any discussion?
I move that this be treated as a special permit.
It is a special permit.
It is.
I move to grant relief with the standard conditions and the restriction that there shall be no more than seven dogs.
Okay, do I have a second on Jim's motion? Second by Richard, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, it carries, thank you.
Thank you.
53-21 Demaro, and that is One Blue Jay Terrace.
Everybody turn everything in on that last one before we cross files. And we're gonna sign that.
Oh, we gotta sign.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Can you leave?
Yeah, I think so. I'll get to it quick, I just want to get this one working.
Take your time, take your time. We gotta do what we gotta do.
We don't want to put your file in this folder because then even if we say yes, you'll get denied because it was filed wrong.
Thank you.
Here you go, buddy.
That needs to stay there. Which one are we looking at, 5321 Demaro?
Yep.
Correct.
Chris, pass it to Chris.
And this is for you to sign. And I gave you the wrong thing there, let me have that back, please. I wanted to give you this, don't, this is for the next one.
Thanks.
Okay. And while I'm reading, you guys can have these. We're ruthlessly organized. No cross filing. Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on October 13th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 53-21 for a special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 621, and Article 13, Section 1352, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Miriam Demaro proposing to construct a 20-foot by 28-foot two-car garage addition with living space above, located at One Blue Jay Terrace, Wareham, Mass. That appears on Assessors Map 46A1, Lot 27 and Lot 28 in the R30 zoning district.
All right, name and address for the record and tell us what you're doing.
Yes, Miriam Demaro, One Blue Jay Terrace, my husband. And our representative, Dave Moore.
Okay. Oh, hi David, long time no see. All right, what are you guys planning to do?
Yeah, we live on a 6230-foot square lot in the Pinehurst Community Beach community. It's approximately 55 by 174 feet. It's long and narrow, and the house existing with as well as a one-car garage, which we intend to remove, as well as a shed to remove, and everything is non-conforming right now. We're going to make it less non-conforming by giving relief to the backside of the existing garage and pulling it eight feet off of the lot, which is now zero feet off the lot, it's right on the lot line. We've been in front of conservation already and have approval, just waiting to get it onto record. The garage is, you know, obviously because we want to move down here and make it our permanent residence and have a small garage with some living space so that we can have a home that's large enough to live in year-round. It will have access through the breezeway, which will be conditioned just like the house, and we're looking for relief on lot coverage and rare setback. And most of the homes in the neighborhood have significant lot coverage over the 25%. We're going over slightly, but looking for some relief on that.
All right, I see that you have some existing non-conformity, but the commissioner saying on the left rear corner, you requesting eight-foot setback?
Yes, correct. If I may, the setback is right here, and the existing garage that we're gonna be removing is right on the lot line.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, so if you look here, you can see this is existing garage, this is what we propose to add on to the existing home.
I see.
We're gonna be actually giving.
So you're getting rid of that red thing?
Correct, we're gonna get rid of the whole garage, move the whole garage forward. So it will be a setback deficiency, but we're actually making it better.
Okay.
Because it's zero now, we're gonna make it eight feet.
Okay, very good.
This is, to give you an idea of what the property looks like, I know Mr. Semple came out to the property today, I don't know if anybody else has, but Blue Jay Terrace runs parallel to the house. Pinehurst is here, Blue Jay is here, this is the existing garage, this is the existing home, this is the existing shed. We intend to come through the house right here into the garage and the upper space, remove this, and this is just the other angle, the driveway will be relocated from existing now on Blue Jay to further up on Blue Jay. It'll come in and the driveway will, the garage will enter this way. We have met with all the neighbors, I don't have any petition in writing or anything like that, but we took this house from a hoarder's house 10 years ago and rebuilt the whole house already, and I think the neighbors are thrilled with us, so I don't think we'll have any objections.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Chris, what do you think?
I took a ride down there today also.
Oh, thank you.
And took a look, and I guess, I was just wondering why he said that would, why the commissioner said it would create a new rare setback non-conformity when they're like touching the line there, it's like.
Yeah, I'm not sure on that.
In that comment that he had, but.
I was confused, like Chris.
Yeah, I think it's an error, but I don't know.
Removing a non-conformity and they're creating a new one because you're tearing the bound, like, so I think.
Yeah.
Because they're underneath the 10-foot, so.
Right.
I'm all set with the project.
Thank you.
Jimmy?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Richard?
Oh, I'm good, I went down, it's quite a sight to see, they're working the best they can with the room that they have, and by getting rid of that garage on the property line, I believe they're doing the best for that property and the best for the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Very good. Jake?
I agree.
Thank you.
Anyone on the public want to speak in favor or against? Yes, sir?
I'm in favor, I'm a neighbor from across the way.
Okay, just for the record, what's your name?
Kevin Law, and I own a big bond of the road, and I also own a nine bond of the road, and I look directly across at their house.
All right, so you're in favor, okay, very good.
So it shows that a neighbor with direct view is in favor.
Correct. You wanna add anything? Yes, sir?
I'd like to also speak in favor of it, it's gonna be a big addition for the neighborhood, an improvement. We've got a little house there, it's gonna be more aligned with the other houses in the neighborhood, and it's gonna improve property value.
All right, cool, thank you. All right. Anything else? Anyone would like to add anything? That being said, let's move to close.
I'd like to just add one extra thing, I mean, the FAR over there is probably 50 to 80% coverage in a lot of those lots over there. When I drove around, I was probably looked at 35 of the lots and not all the 35, there was probably maybe four that would meet the FAR, the rest were all severely, percentage of the property were houses.
If I could speak to that, Mr. Semple, I did a survey of seven of the abudders' homes, and I did the calculations for the lot coverage, and the average lot coverage is 32.45%.
Very good, all right, that's very good. All right, so.
I think we need to do variances and special permit in this instance.
No, all special, if the board feel not so detrimental, it's all special permit.
All, you think we can do it all?
Because his letter, I was confused, like Chris, the garages make, they taken the garage off, you know what I'm saying? He didn't mention it's non-conforming, that the garage is zero feet.
So you think we're good with special permit right down the line?
Yeah.
I make a motion that this is not detrimental to the neighborhood and should be treated as a special permit.
Let's close it first.
We didn't do that?
No.
I'm getting, I'm getting sore.
I'm getting tired, yeah, let's go.
I'd like to close the public portion of this hearing, I make a motion.
To close, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jake, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, it's closed, now.
I make a motion that this be treated as a special permit.
And the findings is not.
Because it's not detrimental to the neighborhood.
All right, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain.
Thank you for your time.
Not yet. And now, what's the wishes on the special permit?
I make a motion to grant relief on all three, I think it's three items, or two items.
Two items.
On both items, as outlined in the commissioner's letter, standard conditions per plan provided.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second.
On that special permit?
Seconded by Chris.
Second by Chris, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, it carries, now you can go, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you, David. All right, have a good night. All right, 54-21, 12 Whitmore Ave. Good thing for our guys not here, we'll be here until the morning.
This is Field, 5421.
Yeah.
Did everybody go? Thank you. You guys are all signed on the last one? Thank you. Yes, I thank you very much. Room's thinning out. It's not getting any cooler.
It's getting hot, man.
Yeah. One. Planning board copy. This one for Chris. One, two, three. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on October 13th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 5421 for a special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 628, and Article 13, Section 1352, under Wareham zoning bylaws, to David Field of 249 Temple Street, Whitman, Mass., 02382, proposing to add a garage with second-floor living space to the structure located at 12 Whitmore Ave, Wareham, Mass. That appears on Assessors Map 1, Lot 189B, in the Onset Village 2 zoning district. Boy, we've got an onset in here tonight, haven't we?
Yeah, I know, a lot of projects in onset. All right.
Attorney David Asag, 95 West Elm Street, beautiful downtown Brockton.
And I'm David Field, the owner of 12 Whitmore Ave and Onset Village.
Thank you. He's requesting pursuant to the building inspector's letter of August 9, 2021, variance or special permit as the board deems in two regards. This two-car addition garage will change the setback on Pearl Ave to 5.5 feet, and will increase the FAR from a 20% per right to, I believe it's 55%. David Field bought this property about six years ago, he's invested substantial improvements to the point now where he has a beautiful home inside and out, he's looking to add a two-car garage with living space, planning for his future, fairly near future, where he'll be selling his home in Whitman and retiring to the Wareham neighborhood that he's fallen in love with. He's spoken to, I think, all if not, most if not all of his abudders, and they have a great relationship and they're all in favor of it. If you look at the lot, you'll see that it is particularly uniquely shaped, it's the shape of an ice cream cone, and I believe that's the basis of the hardship. The improvement will, in our opinion, add to the neighborhood. You can see from his plan, he didn't cut corners, it's a beautifully designed addition, and it'll be constructed as beautifully as well and maintained.
Nice. It's coming up the area, nice. All right, that being said, let's hear it from Chris.
This is a single family, right?
Yes, sure.
Is there two kitchens, one on the first and second floor? This is a single family, right?
It's a single. No, it's a two-family home, and what I do is, on the first floor, I rent out, and on the second floor, I have a living room, I mean, I have a kitchen, I have a bathroom, and two bedrooms, and what I want to do is I want to make my bedroom and a living room because I really don't have a living room above the garage. But the biggest thing was, in 1958, my father got out of the Air Force and he bought a 58 Corvette for $3,800, and I lost him at 64 years old. He gave me the car, and I got a picture here when I was six years old and my father was four, and I restored the car, and I would love to be able to keep the car in the garage there and move down here because it's beautiful down here.
We were thinking maybe if the car got donated, a board member might be a little key.
I'm all set, I don't have any more questions.
Excuse me, the board member, how about the board and we can take turns? Why should there be, why can't we just, why can't we all enjoy it?
Do you have a field card, like a tax bill on that, a field card on the property?
A field card?
A field card.
A field card? I think I do.
So you're gonna extend your living above the garage?
Yeah.
So you rent downstairs and you want to make your house bigger upstairs?
Yeah, upstairs, I don't have a living room, I just have a kitchen and two like 10-by-12 bedrooms and a bathroom, and I want to make a living room, and I want to make a master bedroom for myself and a bath above the garage.
And you can see in the plan, the footprint is 23 by 40.
I do have a, I just had surgery on my right knee, but I do have something that I think would help you from the. think would help you from the town.
You know, after that knee has been worked on, it's going to be real hard to work that accelerator.
You're kidding.
That's the right foot.
May need a driver.
I got a question through the chair.
Go ahead.
Just, I'm not placing Whittmore.
So, Whittmore, I'll tell you where, you know where the boat launching ramp is? The public boat launching ramp in Onset? Whittmore is like right up on the...
It goes up the hill?
Yeah, it goes up the hill.
I know where it is now.
Hear me?
I was drawing a blank.
Do you want to see this?
Nope, I got it already. I think the house was formerly owned, never mind, I won't say.
Yeah, it was formerly owned.
By the guy from Abbey Glass.
Who I bought, I bought the house six years ago off of...
Yeah, then you bought it, I'm going back three owners.
Yeah, no, I'm not sure.
All right.
Okay, no problem. I got it, I know where it is.
Anyone in the audience, on the public, want to speak in favor or against this project? I hear none. So what's the board wishes? What do you guys think? So it's the same idea, it's existing non-conforming. If the board feels less detrimental, we could act upon it as a special permit. If you guys feel this way, you don't want to argue it no more, we could close.
If we've given the audience a chance to speak?
Yeah. Nobody wants to say?
Nobody spoke?
Nobody spoke.
I don't see it detrimental to the neighborhood.
Let's close it first.
I'd move to close the public hearing.
I have a second to close.
My second.
Second by Richard, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain.
I move to treat this as a special permit, finding that it's not detrimental to the neighborhood.
Do I have a second on that?
Second?
Second by Chris, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, opposed, abstain.
I move to grant relief as outlined in the commissioner's letter and following the plans as provided in the application.
Okay.
Standard conditions.
Standard condition to the special permit, all in, do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Second by Chris, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, opposed, abstain, carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Enjoy that vet.
Thank you.
He does.
We'll be over.
All right, last one.
Thank you, Chris.
You did this on purpose, you wearing us out to the last?
Put in a lot, you put in a lot of stuff so that we'd be tired.
Oh, very intense. All right, 55-21, Mannix, special permit, variance.
Intergal.
And that is 238 and 240 Sandwich Road.
Thank you. Just let me get this one signed and out of my, off my desk before we, I don't think we have a bunch of papers to handle, but just in case. Chris, I'm going to let you go second this time, just to get it down this end of the table. These guys took off.
Before I go further, you guys, everyone here for this project? Okay, I just don't want you to be sitting... Troy, right in the back? You enjoying it?
So far.
Make sure we're going to make a formal vote.
We have to make a...
A formal vote before everybody goes away.
Don't let us close the meeting, Troy.
All right.
All right. Did you read it?
I guess I was going to let the other two gentlemen that are getting a glass of water be back while I read it so they can have the benefit of hearing the public announcement, but if you want it read, I'll read it.
No, let's wait, we need a quarter.
Is this Mannix?
Yeah.
It's already open, we don't need to read it.
No, not the special permit.
Site plan. Is it a site plan?
It's a brand new hearing.
Sign that and get this folder closed and, so yeah, let's let them have their glass of water and...
Jim, this isn't the first hearing on the site plan review?
Is this a new hearing?
Um, no, but she put it on, I think, just at the end of the agenda.
We did...
It continued. I think we opened it, can't recall now.
It's a new number.
No, no, I think the special permit, you applied from scratch.
I'm going to read this in, it's October 13th.
Oh, okay, yes, so...
Okay, I will read it in. Good catch.
Because it was a separate fee for the, yep, the site plan review.
Right. It's a brand new special permit hearing.
Right.
Right.
Nothing more?
No, the variance, we already approved that before. We will reiterate our vote, so it's one draft, council, if things go forward, we're going to make one draft of variance. But we already voted on the variance and so now it's just a special permit and site plan review.
So you signed this, right? So you started the night, you started the night off and you're going to try to finish us off, is that it?
Aye.
Marathon Morton.
All right, let's hear it.
Okay. Oh, wrong, wrong. See, I just, I just did what I did not want to do, put this in the wrong folder. Is this all Whittmore? Yeah, David Field, Whittmore, okay. No, I didn't. Put it in the right folder, I don't have yours, so that's why I'm saying 13. Maybe we don't have to read it. Hang on a minute. What number is Mannix?
It's been over a year.
Mm-hmm.
On this one, I get this. This we've already done. This is for me. This is for you. No, no, that's yours, Nazzy, that's got a different set. That's got information that we don't want Jake and Richard to know. These are for Jake and Richard. We don't want them to know as much as us, we got to... We get the... Thank you. And, it does say October 13th. Everybody's got a... The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on October 13th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 55-21 for a special permit, comma, variance and site plan review under the requirements of Article 6, 623 and 625, and Article 15 under the Wayham zoning bylaws for Frederick C. Mannix of 188 North Street, Boston, Mass., proposing a Crossroads Care Center at 238 and 240 Sandwich Road, Wayham, Mass. That appears on Assessors Map 133, lots 1100A and 1101A in the Commercial Strip Zoning District.
All right, let's hear it.
All right, thank you. So everyone should have, what we're looking at right now is...
Can you just name the address for the record?
Jillian Morton, 184 Main Street. So we're looking at a submission of the revised, I think it's second set of plans dated October 11th. On these plans, we incorporated comments from the town engineer, in fact, trying to make all the revisions necessary. So you'll be able to look through those. I've also included the response letter to Mr. Rowley as well, so that's in there, you can see our responses to his comments. I'd like to start too with, I think probably in your file, Mr. Chairman, you see that there's a fire department letter as well that was submitted. That came in a little bit later. It's dated October 8th. It's not in my submission, but it might be in the file there that Sonia has. And that had a few comments on it, which we've addressed as well on these plans. So really just trying to get through and see if there are further comments in regards to the site plan review. Happy to hear that and I know as well there are people from the public who would like to speak. So I'd like to open up for questions and comments and we have our, my client here, Mr. Mannix, and our engineer as well, Brian Wallace, some people to answer those technical questions that Ms. Rowley might have.
All right. Mr. Mannix, why don't you refresh our memory with the project? I know we talk about it over and over again, but just quick refreshing before we start going through these plans.
Well, quick background is that we started this project as a, I believe a year ago. And what's taken a considerable amount of time is the input that we've got, received over prior hearings and incorporated them into the plans. We've come up with a set of plans that I think has had quite a bit of input, including the fire departments, all the various departments. And I think that at this point, as I understand it, we had a small issue with the site plan, the site plan review fee, I don't believe was paid at the right time. So we've been talking about site plan this whole time.
Can you shed me my mic?
Oh, you stick the mic in your mouth, thank you.
All right, gee, I'm sorry about that.
It's got to be within three inches of your mouth.
So anyhow, we're here to do, oh, my own? Yeah. We're here to do site plan review and there's been a lot of the input that's been in the site plan review has been vetted already in public hearings and we've taken a lot of the comments from Mr. Rowley and incorporated them in a prior plan. We have a new letter from Mr. Rowley and we've incorporated all those changes that he suggested. In fact, one of the suggestions he made was a grade change at the Plymouth Road entrance, I'm sorry, at the Sandwich Road entrance, which was a good call, I think it came out a lot better than we initially did. The history of the project is that it's an intermediate care center and it's been designed to take advantage of the fact that Toby Hospital is right down the street, EMS is right down the street, one mile away, Toby Hospital is two miles away. And we feel it's a, as I said in the impact statement, we feel that this project is probably the least invasive of any projects allowed in strip commercial. It's going to be for people who need some level of care. I'm not sure exactly how the whole thing will work out, but it's people who can have some sort of independent living and need basically care to assist them with ADL. ADL is the Activities of Daily Living. And as people age, they need help, sometimes with a lot of them, sometimes with just a few. But this is a facility that I think will be good for the town and certainly good for the elderly population that's growing. I'm growing along with it and I think it's going to be a good spot. And I think we put the solarium and all that kind of, we talked about all of that, the health, the benefits and the whole thing. We'll defer to the board, I don't want to take too much more time, it's late. If they have any questions on the project, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
I know, right?
All right, Brian. Just your name for the record.
Yeah, Brian Wallace with J.C. Engineering.
Okay. So I see the plans and I'm assuming Mr. Rowley get the plans as well, right?
I was informed today that there was a new set. I don't know whether it's different than the ones that I have or not. The set that I did the final, the last review on has a date of...
This one, August 10.
Yeah.
Was that revised? Oh, no, October 11.
Right.
So that's a couple of days ago.
That was two days ago, yep.
We don't have that.
You don't have an 11?
No. All right, so...
I was only informed yesterday that there were new plans and I wasn't able to get there to get them in time for this meeting, I wouldn't have had a chance to review.
Well, I'm sure this is going to get continued, but we just talk a little bit about, why don't you fill us in quick?
Yeah, sure, I'll, yep.
I mean, we're going to wait for Mr. Rowley's comments, but just fill us in quick and if somebody could give Charlie a copy.
Mr. Rowley.
Anyone, so he could look as we speak.
Welcome.
We don't expect, we don't expect any comment from him if he's going to study it, but...
Okay.
All right, go ahead.
So I'll be happy to explain more of the civil site related comments here. So, you know, the two crucial ones we are looking at were the site entrance. Mr. Rowley made a comment that the grade of the entrance was in excess of 8% and there was very little level landing area available, posed a hazard in, you know, snowy, icy conditions potentially. So we've taken the time to address that area and this is the westernmost entrance off of Route 6 we're looking at here. So on the previous site plan, we did have a grade of 8% or more. We've reduced that down to 7.5% max and we've also provided a 15-foot level landing area as you approach Route 6 and would take a turn. We were able to do this by reducing the grade just off of the entrance. We now provide the wall that was always a little bit to the right of the entrance has been extended to the front and we've reduced the grade directly in front of that to be able to, you know, have a shorter grade as you go and ultimately provide that 7.5% as well as the level landing area. So that, you know, we worked through that comment, felt the solution was pretty good, should meet the satisfaction of the review engineer. We also addressed the catch basin 3A, which is just southeast of the, well, the southeast corner of the building, along that driveway aisle. He had concerns that the flow line and the gutter line would not meet that catch basin where it was. We have to set that one back a little bit just due to the location of the sewer pipe as well as the force main that run around it. So that's an offset catch basin and we've adjusted the curb line to allow more flow to reach that grade so we wouldn't anticipate any bypass of stormwater on that.
What about the sewer line, you can...
So please, go ahead.
You're going to move the sewer? What are you talking about?
Catch basin drain.
Yeah, the catch basin 3A.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought you were talking about the sewer.
Nope, nope. Sewer, everything has been left as it was before. So that was two of the main changes we made on the site plan to respond to the comment And we have addressed the other comments just in the response letter itself, but as far as plan changes go, those are the two, the two main ones.
All right. Apparently we're not going to get much done on this, but general questions, Chris?
You want time to look at it? I assume?
Yeah, as far as the catch basin is concerned, I saw what he did. I'm fine with that. Going from 8% to 7.5 doesn't throw me a great deal. I think you still got the same issue, but I would like time to look at the rest of the plans because I haven't seen them.
Yeah, absolutely.
We have, we have provided that level landing area though and you'll have a chance to look at it, but just to control, you know, the slope a little bit more and provide a level area as your concern was a steep slope. Right as you enter Route 6, we've eliminated that, so just wanted to clarify that a little bit.
We're not going to get too much on the technicality of it right now. We'll wait for Mr. Rowley to go through, we just go on like the idea and the substance of the project. So going back to the project, what do you think of the project as a whole, Chris?
As a whole, I'll say like I said before that I think this building is way too big for the property. I think it takes up too much space. I don't see any green space at all on this property anymore. I'm not sure about, if you don't want to get into details, there's only one entrance into the garage. I'm not sure about, if you don't want to get into details, there's only one entrance into the garage, it looks like, for vehicles.
That is correct. There's one vehicle entrance.
Is there a door on there too?
For pedestrians.
For the garage?
Uh, yeah, there, well, there's one entrance for vehicles and then two entrances on that same side for pedestrians.
There's no sidewalk, it looks like, that goes anywhere around the building at all for anybody to walk around?
Uh, there is a walkway, existing sidewalk along Route 6, and we do have walking areas in the rear of the building.
I just still think it's just way too big for this piece of property. And that's all I, that's all I have right now.
I have no, no comments at this time.
Richard.
I also think it's a, quite a substantial building for the property, but I've also saw Mr. Mannix has done quite a bit of alterations and things that we've requested from him, and I think he's, he's trying to do his best. So that's what I have to say about it now.
All right, I'm gonna move to the public. Is anyone here in favor of this project? All right, anyone against? One other time. Yeah, you wanna come forward?
Sure, I'll come forward.
Yes.
Three hours. Karen Poudre, 9 Plymouth Road.
Hang on, just one minute. Joe, would you mind moving your microphone over to the end of that table? Thank you. Thank you.
Do you guys wanna come up?
We need your name and address, ma'am.
One at a time? Okay. Karen Poudre, 9 Plymouth Road. First of all, the comment that was just made about this building being way too big for this property is exactly what we're thinking. It's also a detriment to the neighborhood. We have a very quiet residential neighborhood right there on Plymouth Road. You're bringing in extra additional people, and then there's gonna be workers. We believe that there is an entrance to Plymouth Road. Are you widening Plymouth Road? Have you been down there? On your plans, it says that it's an ancient way. Yes, it is. It's a cow path. Are you gonna be widening Plymouth Road to get ambulances in and out of there? Are you gonna tar it? Are you putting a traffic light there? Have you done a traffic study? Okay? It's just not what we want in our neighborhood. And that is the consensus of pretty much everyone. Would you like to speak to some more neighbors?
Sure, if they would like to.
Sure.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Alexisino, 7 Plymouth Road. I have a few concerns about how large the building is, and this is James Andrecy, 7 Plymouth Road. And I'm also concerned with the traffic flow that will come from this. It is right near the intersection and right off the highway. And there's also a childcare center across the street that brings quite a lot of traffic as well. So I'm just concerned with how that will work, the flow in and out, entrance and exits, how that will affect the neighborhood as it is. But that is my concerns. Do you have any, or is that it?
Let me, let me ask you a question. You have concern about traffic on 28th or Plymouth Road?
Um, both, both.
On both?
Yeah. Just 'cause I'm concerned, you know, about the ambulance and ambulance exit and entrance and just getting more traffic even pulling out of Plymouth Road is trouble as it is, so, yeah.
Let me.
Our road's gotta be at least from that piece of black tape to that wall.
Yeah, it's very.
Let me, let me interrupt you for a second. Is Plymouth Road only for emergency access, or?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We, we had discussions prior, and I'm not sure you were part of it. But with Plymouth, with the residents of Plymouth Road, what we did was we eliminated the exit, any, any exit there. The fire department asked us to put some kind of a H-20 loading, which is a heavy-duty concrete pad, basically.
Right.
To allow big trucks to go. They wanna get a ladder truck in and out of there, and they asked if I could do it. So we did that. It's strictly for emergency vehicles, fire trucks especially. We eliminated the parking in the rear, so nobody would go back up there and try to use it. And the neighbors at the time asked if I could put a gate up there, and I said I would if the fire department would let me. They, they refused to put a gate up there. They didn't want it, they didn't want to have a gate. We put a sign that nobody can use it, and we can enforce it. This is a, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mannix?
No, no, no.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Hello? Hello? All right, you just gotta, ma'am. To everyone, you're only gonna talk and answer to me. You don't, you don't talk, like, when you talk, you talk to me. When you have a comment, you answer to me. You don't answer to her.
Okay.
So, and no, please don't interrupt anybody, because nobody interrupted you. So just answer to me, please.
Pardon, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So what we did was we eliminated the, any kind of, what we're gonna call temptation to use that area. It's just difficult to get back there and get out, not for a fire truck, but for people wouldn't, wouldn't have any reason to go back there, number one. Number two, the visitor parking is right in front of the building, and they would use the Sandwich Road entrances and exits.
So basically, it's for emergency use?
It's only emergency exits. It's gonna be posted as such, and that's in the plan.
So what else concerns you have?
So the other concern I had was the traffic that it's going to bring to that area. So Route 6 as it is, there is that childcare center across the street that does bring traffic. It's right near that intersection, and it's right off the highway. Pulling out of there as it is is tricky, so I'm just concerned that that will bring more traffic that may not be needed at this time.
So you think there'll be impact on Route 6?
Yes.
Yeah, that's okay. So we'll have to, just one second. We'll, we'll address this with the traffic studies after. Sir, what do you wanna say?
Oh, no, I'm just gonna say cars fly up.
Just come to the mic. Has to be on record.
No, cars fly up and down that road too, coming from both ways. It doesn't matter with the light on the left, or it doesn't matter on, coming from the right, they're flying both ways. So if you got someone coming to a stop trying to get into that, whatever you wanna call it, the business, it bound to have an accident there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, this is Deborah Dixon. I live at 5 Plymouth Road.
What's, what's your address, ma'am?
5 Plymouth Road.
Yeah.
I agree with everything they're saying. There's gonna be too much traffic. There's not enough room down there. And he's talking about the emergency exit and entrance only on Plymouth Road. People are gonna see there and they're gonna use it, because there's gonna be too much traffic on the other entrance, so they're gonna start using it all the time anyways. So that's not gonna make a difference.
Yeah.
And I think it's just way too big for the, for the plot area he has.
All right. Thank you. We'll take it into consideration. Thank you. So going back to our subject, so I guess Charlie, will, will we have something for next hearing?
Well, with respect to the technical aspect of it and what has been presented, I can look the plans over, but I put a lot more in my letter with respect to the plans themselves, and I have some questions about it.
Go ahead, let's hear it.
Well, I'm gonna start right from the very beginning, because when we had a meeting in Ken's office, this goes back a year or so.
Yeah.
And it was first proposed as a, I think assisted living facility. I asked the question of whether or not there was a licensed operator to be involved in this. I think Mr. Mannix said that he was looking for one at the time. I'm confused as to what sort of a complex this is, given some of the statements that are in the documentation that you've received. The traffic study refers to an ITE section that deals with congregate housing. I note in the impact statement that they said that congregate housing might be a possibility in the future. That's an entirely different type of a setup than either an assisted living or advanced care or whatever this intermediate care facility is. I've looked at the floor plans, and the question that I have in my mind is, is this a facility that someone who is licensed, if a license is needed, has taken a look at to see if what's on the inside is sufficient? For example, it shows a kitchen on the first floor, I believe, with no facilities in the kitchen as to how much space is taken up. There's no storage facility for foodstuffs, things like that, refrigerator or cooler or whatever. A couple of floors don't have public restrooms. There's no conference center where a potential applicant might meet with the manager of the project. So I really can't tell you, by looking at the plans, exactly what this is or whether it really requires a licensed operator to provide this. Other comments were made that the first floor might be used for dementia patients. Typically, that involves a lockdown-type of facility, which, if that's the case, that restricts the common flow, the going back and forth on that first floor. I also made some comments with respect to the solarium and the fence that has to be up at the top. You've got the solarium, plus you have a, like a boardwalk or a platform there with a fence around it. Assuming the fence is built to safety standards, anybody sitting down, as you and I are right now and trying to see over that fence to some nice view, you're not gonna do it, either inside or outside.
Unless it's glass or wire.
All right. If you got a wire, if that's the other thing I pointed out, you're five stories up when you're at that level. People who are gonna be sitting there, elderly people, do they wanna be sitting in a windy situation? I don't know. I just have no idea as to what's being presented or what you're being expected to approve and what type of facility it really is. And that's all of my comments, and it has nothing to do with the technical aspect of the pitch of the street or drainage or anything like that. It's just stuff that I've seen as I've looked at the plans.
Let me, let me ask you something, Mr. Mannix. Who's, who's be running, who'll be running the project? Which company? Do you have a management company? Do you have a intermediate care company?
Mr. Chairman, any, any proposed use there would have to be a use that's allowed. And what's, what's allowed under the zoning bylaw, as I'm sure you know, is elderly, and I'm sorry, nursing home and intermediate care center, which shall have the same meaning as convalescent home. I've quoted some of that in my letter, my response. All of those facilities that we propose, basically an intermediate care center, which is what we're gonna do. Memory care is very often part of an intermediate care center, and Mr. Rowley points out very correctly what it is. It would be locked down. And the simple answer, I'm not good at simple answers, is anything that we propose that has to be licensed would be licensed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and therefore, all of the, many of the issues that he brings up are legitimate issues, but they can't be addressed now, because without a permit, without the permission to build the facility, we cannot license a facility, and therefore, I can't have an operator. We've had this discussion for the past year, that a licensed operator has to come in, and that operator has to get a license. And to answer directly your question, I do not have an operator in mind, but we have to get an operator. We won't build the building. So it's, it's a catch, it's kind of a cat before the horse thing.
So you, you don't have an operator or a company to run that?
Mr. Chairman, with all, with all due respect, I don't have a project, so I can't get an operator.
I understand, really, sir. Do you have, like, the reason, I'm sure Mr. Rowley and myself would be curious to know, some, like, the reason I would like to see an operator or somebody will have, like, some guidelines as how the project runs?
Okay, I, well, that's a different question, actually. We don't have an operator. We know how a project runs. We, that's what the, the, the plans show a common kitchen, and Mr. Rowley points out there's no kitchen equipment drawn in the plan. I think that's what he's pointing out. And it's, it's true, there's no kitchen equipment drawn, but it's about a 25 by 25 kitchen. And we're contemplating, I don't know, 80-something units. It wouldn't require much of a kitchen. That's a pretty good-sized kitchen. And it, it's a commercial kitchen. It shows the seating. It's a common kitchen. There are kitchenettes in each unit, so the kitchen doesn't have to be that big. Some of the people in intermediate care do not require much medical assistance. Some do. So there would be different levels of that depending on what's offered for amenities. And again, each floor has the ability to be changed around, you know, within, again, guidelines of the city, state, and federal. And what happens is a bathroom, for instance, like he brings out, there is no bathroom shown on the first floor. Actually, I'm sorry, there are shown on the first floor. I don't know if you missed that in the plan, but they're not, there are none shown on the upper floors, common bathrooms. But they could be shown, because there's plenty of room. I don't wanna go through the letter point by point, but, but, you know, there's some comments made about storage space. Mr. Rowley correctly points out, we got a lot of parking spaces inside the garage. We put all the parking, basically, for the residents and the staff within the confines of the building. Somebody mentioned the, behind me, mentioned the care center across the street. That's got a huge parking lot right in the front of it. I don't know how many cars go there, but this is not the case in this, this project. This project has all the parking basically indoors. The parking for visitors, because they're not allowed to be in the building, we expect the building to be operated as a lockdown building. Staff and residents only. With COVID and what kind of the crazy things that happen in this country now with people running around, it's gotta be locked down. And it's fully staffed. It'll have to be to take care of people. And some of the questions that come up, even in Mr. Rowley's letter, would be resolved quite easily. Again, staff and visitor parking, we've got plenty of visitor parking out there.
All right, let me ask you a question. The architect who's doing the project, have they done other intermediate care projects?
She's done other projects, but I have been, I'm fully aware of what it takes to be an intermediate care. I've done, I've done a lot of stuff. I work for an institution now. The thing is, the layout is for institutional use, and the architect has done the institutional use. The architect that's doing this plan is for the benefit of the zoning board. We wanna get the dimensional requirements, all those things that we met. The interior, very often, a new architect would come in, and you mentioned an operator, Mr. Chairman. The operator would, chances are, would have an architect that would work with them. Very often, like a Denny's restaurant, I don't have to even have them around here anymore. They have a, they have a certain way they wanna operate. Some of the people we've talked about and talked to have their own idea of how to do it. We pro con up in, in New Hampshire.
I totally understand, but my point is, for instance, say, a person who's knowledgeable with designing, like an architect who does intermediate cares, you might out, you might go out now and build this thing with the hallways of 50 inches. Then all of a sudden, you build this building, and you bring an operator, say, you know what, intermediate care. The state comes in, it's 60 inches. Now what do we do?
You've done your homework, because the car is a nursing home size, you know.
I'm just, I'm just giving an example.
No, that's a good example.
For instance, like Mr. Rowley brought up, like, like when you go to the office, some, like, like a meeting area, or when you go there with the elderly, you wanna sit down, talk to them. For instance, is that room is there, for instance, for like consultation and stuff? So bottom line, it's very important that the plans meet the criteria of intermediate care. If we, if we are to grant you a permit and with the, with the proposed architecture plans you have, and when you build it, it doesn't meet the intermediate care criteria, now what do we do?
Well, I mean, again, I don't wanna take too much time, but I'd be willing to. I'll stay here all night if everybody's willing to stay with me.
No, no, you understand, what I'm trying to say, to make everybody's life easy, as I said in the beginning of the, we were, we had the first hearing, which is, was the car wash. We wanna depend on professionals. So we, we don't understand those, but we need to see this professional who drafted these plans with the, with the architecture plan, that he stamped on those plans, does meet the criteria of intermediate care. And from there on, we don't care if he says he's done, or she said we did, she does intermediate cares, and she put her stamp on it, we don't care.
Well, I have.
I mean, we're depending on her stamp. I mean, it's, she's liable. We're not liable no more.
Mr. Chairman, her stamp would, would go on, or the, the construction drawings or the permit drawings would be a stamped set of drawings. These are concept drawings, number one. Number two, I don't know that the, there's been a lot of talk and a lot of changes and stuff like that. Thank you, Mr. Semple. I have been trying to accommodate. I think it's caused some confusion. These plans, if you, if you have them in front of you, each floor has a common, it says common room right at the end of each floor. You've mentioned places for, for what you just mentioned, Mr. Chairman, but they show on the plans.
Listen, I don't, and I don't care if there's a room or there's no room. The question came up, my concern is, as long as it complies with intermediate. as long as it complies with intermediate care, that's what I care. It could say no bathrooms at all in the first floor, I don't care. It's just what the professional says with their stamp, saying, "Intermediate care, no room, yes room, three rooms, five rooms." That's what we care about. Like I said, we don't understand these, we're depending on the professionals.
Well, the professional drawing that you see in front of you shows some of the things that you're asking for and some of the things that Mr. Rowley is asking for. But if he's asking for a common room for people to meet, I think that's a very good question. But the answer is, it's already in the plan. So how do I answer that, again?
No, no.
The professional, no, Mr. Chairman, this has been drawn by an architect, she's not here, she's in Vermont. She could be here to talk about it. But they are drawn, the corridors are eight feet wide.
I didn't mention the corridor, I'm just, I'm speaking an example.
It's a good example, because the corridor is designed to be for intermediate care.
Okay.
So do you have?
Yes, sure.
I think the point that's trying to be made here is we don't want to improve a structure because we believe it's going to be a nursing home. And then after the structure is built, an architect.
An arch, I'm sorry, I didn't have my microphone on. I turned it off because I was coughing earlier. The concern is, we don't want to have a structure on Sandwich Road that's been built, and then after the structure is built, the tenant comes along and says, "It doesn't suit my needs." And you come back to us and say, gee, we built the building wrong, now it's got to be housing. Now it's got to be an insane asylum. We thought we were going to build a lobotomy center, but now we're going to build a basketball court. We want to know that it's being built to be what it's going to be. That's what the chair is trying to say. If this architect is designing this building to be an intermediate care facility, then that's what we're going to act on it, intermediate care facility. What we were trying to avoid is it going from an intermediate care facility to a low-intensity prison.
I couldn't agree more, but I don't think anybody, it must be, I'm not going to be, I hate to, let me not be me for a minute. If I want to get an operator to put an intermediate care center in, now, if you're telling me that you don't want a prison, that's fine. I'm not going to put one there. But I'll tell you right now, if I'm allowed to put a nurse, if an operator wants to put a nursing home in there, are you telling me that I can't put a nursing home in there? Because it's allowed, it's an allowed use.
Well, if you're going to put a nursing home there, apply for a nursing home.
I'm not applying for, I applied.
So, yes, the answer to your question, if,
Okay.
The answer to your question is, we, you know, I think that's what the chair is trying to ask you. You know, we're not, and we don't think you're playing a shell game. We don't see walnuts on the table, and there's no pee that's going to disappear. That's not the game. But I think what he's trying to ask is, is this plan significantly, is there some way that you can assure him that this is significantly designed to be for the use you want to use it for? And then, yeah, you can bring in a second architect and redesign the interior, just like you used your restaurant example. Wendy's might outfit it one way, and McDonald's would outfit it another way, but they're both serving hot dogs and grilled cheese sandwiches.
Okay, well, I guess I'm a little bit confused. I'm not trying to argue back what you're asking. I understand what you're saying. But it's my understanding that I'm here for site plan approval, which means that we're talking about the site and some of the things that were mentioned, again, from the abutists, is that, no, we're not going to put a traffic light anywhere, we're not going to widen the road, there's a lot of things we're not going to do. But I can't, I can't sit here and, if this is part of site plan approval, then I will do that. But the thing is, it's an intermediate care center. It's labeled as such, it did my, all my other stuff, the impact statement calls an intermediate care center, and it points out the fact that memory care, certain aspects of this thing may change internally. There's no way of doing that now until we put in a plan to actually construct the building and get a permit. If we put in a plan to get a permit, and it's something that's not allowed by the town, we'd have to come back before the board, you know, especially, you know, to make it, first of all, multifamily keeps coming up. I don't intend to put a multifamily.
What is it?
Multifamily keeps coming up. If I want to change this to a multifamily, which I don't, but who knows? You know, I might, by the time this is over, I may not be here. The next, my wife may be here, asking to put a multifamily in. She, or anybody that survives me, would have to go to get a permit to put a multifamily. And I think the building commissioner said, you can't put a multifamily here. We're not trying to. So some of the questions that have come up in the past, I've got a fairly good memory still, are addressed by the fact that I'd have to come before the board again.
We understand that, but we also, sometimes the questions we ask help alleviate public concerns.
Oh, it's, no, I understand that. But I can't do something that can't be done. I cannot have a drawing for permit without, you know, putting in a formal drawing.
The special permit is tied to the use, is your answer, and the use is for intermediate care.
Yes.
Do you have architecture plans with the stamps on them? Yeah, architecture, stamped architecture.
These could be stamped, but, yes, I can submit architectural plans with stamps. I can have my architect stamp them. But as Mr. Rowley has pointed out, he's just got a set of plans that, it's kind, they're not new plans, they were plans that were modified to meet his common.
Can you, for the next hearing, provide us with the architectural plan with the rubber stamp on it? And it says the address and everything, and it says, it says on the plan for, intermediate care, whatever, proposed intermediate care center?
Yes, I can answer that question for my architect, because.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I?
Just like J.C. Engineering where it says, "Proposed site plan." So we'd like to see that the architect stamp a plan, call it Cross Road Asses Care Center here. It should say "intermediate," does it make a difference?
That's just the name of the project.
That's just the name of the project, yeah.
Yeah, if you'd like clarify.
But we would, I would like to see the rubber stamp of the architect. We met her here once, and she seems a very smart lady. And we'd like to see that it shows under her stamp, "Intermediate Care Center," it says, interme, so, so if anybody asks, we say, well, there's an architect, and it says "Intermediate Care Center." What do you do after that? It's your problem, we cover ourselves. Because we want to act upon this special permit, not a nursing home, not a housing, like he said, not a club, as an intermediate care center, because it's criteria for the parking, for traffic, everything else. So if it doesn't say "Intermediate Care Center," it would change the whole concept. So your architecture plan must say "Intermediate Care Center." Now, coming back, going after how the state classifies it, tell you, get a pro office, then for hallway, that, we don't know, that's you and the state. Does that make sense?
It makes a lot of sense. I just, you know, again, if we're at the end of the road with the potential changes, then I would like, I'll submit that set in. I think we're there. Some of the things that Mr. Rowley points out, I can't answer. So my letter speaks, this is my letter. I took J.C. Engineering's comments with regard to the technicality, and I composed this letter, so I'm responsible for it. So what happens is that I feel that the letter speaks for itself. And if the board, we'll have the time now, if we're coming back in a couple of weeks, if they have any questions on these responses, I'd like to know if Mr. Rowley has any questions in the responses. I'd be glad to answer them now, or not take people's time. We can answer it, you know, the way we've been answering it.
I read through it earlier, I get you, I think that's a fair comment.
All right.
So, so again, just want to iterate on our concept of the idea. If we approving a fast-food restaurant, like, say McDonald's, at least it says a fast food with a drive-thru. If it's saying fine dining, it would say a fine dining. So we want to see that your architect draft, a draw, an intermediate care center. And if she's saying, or he, the stamp's saying, "That's intermediate care center," I guess nobody can say anything.
I agree, it's just that, you know, I've been trying to be cooperative and get everybody's comments into it, and that's caused a little bit. We'd like to get a final plan. I believe J.C. Engineering has stamped the drawings that went in with the revisions. So I will, if there are no revisions, there are some comments that he made that require some revisions, but they don't, some of them can't be made. Again, the letter speaks for itself, so if you have any questions on that.
Yeah, we will, I mean, until next time, we'll have one, hopefully, Mr. Rowley will get to it, we'll hear, we'll get a letter prior to the hearing, so we have time to review it. You know what I'm saying?
I should, you know, I, Mr. Rowley composed the letter, I composed the answers, so this shouldn't take too much time to figure out if I've answered them correctly.
No, about the comment from Mr., for the plans, he's going to have to study.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, the site plans.
He's going to have to make new comments, comments about his comments.
Two things.
Yeah.
The impact statement, the very first center says, very first sentence says, "Will contain an intermediate care center with the potential to offer nursing care and congregate care services as determined by community need." How can it be as wide open as that? I just don't understand it, because the criteria for each of those is different. As far as the plans are concerned, with the application package that was submitted, this whole thing was clipped together, along with it is a set of architectural plans. And that's what I used when I put my comments together, if you'll allow me. On the first floor, which is the main entrance to the building, there is no director or staff room. There's a single men and women's toilet facility. The patio access, which I see in the new plan, says it's now an elevated patio access, went through one of the apartments or units, if you will. There's no dedicated kitchen utility space for foods, refrigerator, et cetera. There's no maintenance space, there's no laundry. If you go to the second floor, and just look at those, which is supposed to be, this is the alternative for the first floor as a dementia or memory care center. If it's a lockdown, there's no access to the patio, there's no director's office, there's no laundry. For dementia care, you would think that people who are in that kind of condition are going to need a heck of a lot of supervision and care to keep themselves clean. No laundry? Doesn't make any sense. If you go to the other floors, this is the basement floor, I got separate comments on that. If you go to the second floor, there are no restrooms for staff or public visitors. They talk about, he talked about a common area, I see it at the end of the hallway, but if you're sitting down there, if you want to go to the bathroom, you've got to go to the floor below. There's no toilet in that room. There's no maintenance or linen storage on that level. Same thing for the third floor. The fourth floor has changed in that it has now one less unit, but it has a staff room and a stairwell that leads up to the solarium and roof level. On that floor, there's no restroom for visitors, no maintenance or linen, no toilet in the common area. It seems to me that this needs a little bit of looking at by someone who has really done the kind of a facility that Mr. Mannix is asking for, and I'll use Rosebrook as an example. That was brought to you as a nursing home. It was presented by people who run nursing homes. If it's going to be one or the other, it should be pretty well spelled out. And I think, you've got stuff that's up in the air here. When I looked at the lower level, I got some real issues with that. It has, as a part of the lower level, two elevators that drop down from the main floor. Actually, it's an elevator shaft that goes all the way up to the fourth floor. But it goes down to the floor at the bottom. And it has a vestibule that's right in front of the elevators, so that when you walk out of the elevators, you're not walking into the line of traffic. But when they put that in, they've reduced the travel space down from 24 feet to 20 feet, because there's a column right opposite where that place is. And it confines the area where you can make your turn to three handicapped parking areas right opposite the elevator. I just think that there's too many things that, I don't know how you could actually approve the plan in its present condition. It makes no sense. I am not a nursing home operator, but I'm the director of a facility that does congregate housing. I know what that's like. And having been on, in the site plan review for the one over at,
Rosebrook?
Rosebrook. Having sat through a project facility in Mashpee on a dementia facility, and a second project down there for a nursing home, again, they were presented by people who were actually doing the project and are going to operate it. I just feel that you've got some open-eared questions here that make it very hard to assess the plan and see that it makes any sense.
Okay, that's why we need an architect to tell us that's an intermediate care center.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll be glad to do that, as requested. I would also like, since we're taking a little bit of time, I'll take a little bit more time, if I may, to look at the 03 memory care first-floor plan that Mr. Rowley just referred to.
A3, A03?
A03 MC, memory care. Okay, now, if I, I don't want to mischaracterize anything that was said, but it was said that there's no access to the patio.
Look, there is access to the patio, but it goes through one of the units.
It does not, Mr. Rowley, it goes through the common area. It's clearly delineated in this.
As a dementia, on the dementia one, yes. But if you hold to the first floor level of the plan that you first see, it goes right through a unit.
And if that patio, you know, I can answer that question quite nicely, but I asked to look at the memory care, you talked about the memory care. So I don't want to get into a debate with you, I've been told not to, so I won't. But I'm not afraid to. You cannot mischaracterize this plan, as far as I'm concerned.
I did not mischaracterize it, because it shows two different things.
We're not going to argue about it.
No, we're not going to argue. The memory care, I asked respectfully that we look at this plan. I'd like my time to talk to the chair. The dementia wing, if it's used, has a large common area. It has an enclosed patio, because to get people to go outside. It has staff, it consists of three rooms and a big, large staff room with a kitchen, and a common area opposite that. This is a standard memory care facility plan, period. And if I, if I were here for plan review, I would put in more things in there. But I thought I was here for site plan review. The site is outside the perimeter of the building. If the chair would like me to dig a little deeper in these plans, I will. And I will have my architect put in some of the things that were brought up. They will change in the future, but if that, you know, if somebody wants another bathroom, what's to stop us from putting two bathrooms in there?
But a site, a site plan review is reflecting what's built on it.
Yes.
So it's very important to know what's built in there for us to, I mean, we have a site plan review, we have this perimeter, proposed care center. Unless we know what's exactly proposed, we cannot act upon the site plan, because if it's not intermediate care, you might need less parking, more parking, maybe it's a hotel, who knows? So it's, the two together has to work together. So it's one, it's a combined project. So the site plan is relevant to the building. So it's very important that whoever drafts these buildings, which we definitely need a rubber stamp on them, they have to say it's intermediate care.
Okay, it'll say intermediate, no, I understand that. But Mr. Semple, I think, and prior, asked about some more detail, which I had the architect put in. And again, I'm not trying to be confrontational, but would the chair like to see a layout of the kitchen equipment? Is that what I?
I don't care. If your architect, if your architect says this is intermediate care, that's how it's designed, and that's my rubber stamp, I don't care if I don't see a stove.
I, again, with all due respect to everybody, I'm addressing the chair of the Board of Appeal.
Okay.
If Mr. Rowley has to be addressed, I will handle his questions. Some of, as I said, this speaks for itself. If I have misspoken, and he deserves not only an answer, but he deserves to be, have a, a role in the layout of this entire complex, please tell me. Because I don't feel that he has a role in laying out where the bathrooms are gonna go. But if, if you, if you would like to see more men's rooms and ladies' rooms in this, in this facility, we, we have plenty of room to do it.
Listen, Mr. Mannix, we have to, if we wanna talk about technicality, all of us put together, we don't know what 2% Mr. Rowley knows in engineering.
Yeah, no, he's done a good job that way, very, I'll.
Engineering, Mr. Rowley knows, maybe, I don't know, he, he's a construction, probably Mr. Charlie don't know about construction. I excavated, ride bikes, real estate, so everybody knows their thing. So we rely a lot about Mr. Rowley's comment. Now, if we ask for more bathrooms or not, if your architect says it don't need bathrooms, guess what? It doesn't need bathrooms. Then, then, then it doesn't matter what Mr. Rowley says. If your architect who drafted intermediate care, if Mr. Rowley says it needs one, three bathrooms, and your architect says, no, intermediate care needs one bathroom, then guess what? It's one bathroom.
Mr. Chairman, there are over 100 bathrooms in this, in this as drawn.
I'm, I'm just making an example.
I, I know you're making an example, no, I know that.
Just like the hallway, it's an example.
I, I agree.
If, if the plans were approved, how they were, then, say, if an architect comes in and there were something changed, then would they have to go for a, a modification? On those plans, if there's revisions? In regards to like bathrooms, it's insignificant, right?
We have, we just, we're stuck on bathrooms and hallways, and we're making an example. You know what I'm saying?
Okay, so, big picture, if there are changes to these plans and an operator comes in, they're going to need to come in front of you to get them revised, or no?
No.
So you're saying we grant a site plan until an operator come before we grant the permit?
If they're changing the plans.
I think what the attorney is trying to say is that when we, when we act, if we act in favor of this plan, we should be very specific what we're approving, and if they want to change the plan, they're gonna have to come back to us and request a change.
Isn't that the process, though?
No.
No, you're gonna bring the plans before us, architectural plans, a size, a project, the size. This site plan and the architectural plan is one project, it's gonna be approved as one. So you cannot bring us a plan, intermediate care, what, 60, 80 units in here, and then later say, oh, sorry, it's 100 or 50. When the operator comes in, he might say, you know what, these rooms are small, I need them bigger. You understand? See, that's why it's important to have an architect who does intermediate cares, because he puts the room the right size, or the bathrooms, or the kitchen, or the floor layout, then we act upon it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, these plans are for intermediate care. The details in the plans are at a level that are sufficient, that I feel, for the board to make a decision. If the board feels they aren't sufficient to make a decision, I will increase the detail in the plans. I've done it before, I'll do it again. The only thing I don't wanna do is, is, and Mr. Rowley, I, I compliment him on, on the grade change. If, once he sees it, he'll see what happened. We, we basically changed the entrance so people come to the side of the front door, and, and we put a flat landing spot, 16 feet. He's correct about that, that pitch meeting, that, that was a good call. The other call he made, you know, you'll, you'll go to the asphalt. We, we said three inches of asphalt, he says, instead of inch and a half, an inch and a half, he wants inch and three quarter, inch and a quarter. It's the same, it's the same three inches, but we changed it on the plan. I, I hope you agree that we took your suggestion. I don't, I don't see why, you may wanna change your mind, but we put it in there. What I'm, what I'm concerned with is I have a, an engineer trying to tell my architect how many bathrooms there should be inside the building, and I don't, I don't think that's the purview of the ZBA.
Let me, okay.
No, I don't wanna pick on the bathrooms, but I'm talking about the layout of, of the inside of the building. We, we cannot do anything different on this plan. If we, if we get a permit to build this building, it, it's gonna be under the rules and regulations of the Commonwealth. And, and the ZBA, as I understand it, is, is, is here to make sure that we conform to the zoning code. In the site plan review, I agree with you. If you want more information, and you wanted to say intermediate care, we've had a problem with naming this thing in the past. We just, we just put in crossroads care center.
Right, but the zoning Board of Appeal, wanna, if we grant a permit based on intermediate care, so traffic, parking, everything else that we approve on J.C. Engineering plan, it goes together with what we are proving.
Exactly.
So if, if now you, you plan, for instance, the page, whatever, A5, you have like 10 apartments or 10 units on the floor, now your intermediate care company come, architect say, you know what, 10 units, you can't, it's supposed to be eight. Now what do we do?
I, I don't, really don't understand that question. If I'm, if I, if I make less, lesser amount of units, are you saying that I can't do that?
No, for instance, now we approve, say we approve your plan, there's 24 units on that floor.
There's 24 units, right.
And then the intermediate care, you bring in operator says, and the state say, 24 care units is not allowed for intermediate care, it should be 12. Now what do we do?
We only build 12 units, well, how would that change anything? It would just lessen everything, wouldn't it? I don't, I don't see that happening. These are, these are designed to be, by the way, to meet state regulation and code, but, but you, you wanna have a stamp that says that. But if somebody decides to, if, if you give a, a person zoning for 20 apartments and decide to put up 10, do they have to come back to you to reduce the number of apartments? If they do, then, then they'd come back and say, we don't wanna build 24 anymore on that floor, we wanna build 12. I think that's what the, the attorney was asking.
That's what I'm trying to say, it would be a lot of change.
You know, that's what she's trying to say. But I, I have never seen a diminishment, if, if we want less.
Maybe it's the other way around.
I think it's the other way around, yeah, if we wanna make more.
Maybe it's the other way around.
Yeah, if, if we wanted to make it bigger, believe me, I, I.
Let's, step by step.
Yeah.
Let's see the rubber stamp with the intermediate care next time.
You'll see.
And Mr. Rowley will have a chance to go through these plans, and then we'll argue it next time.
Uh, we don't have to argue. I, I think some of the comments, some of the, I don't mind arguing, but some of the comments that are made, we can incorporate them. I don't feel we have to, but we will. We'll put in, we'll put some men's and ladies' rooms, I'll, I'll take some of his comments.
Listen, it doesn't matter what Mr. Rowley, or he thinks about the inside, or we think. We need a professional architect who drafts. If he says you don't need bathrooms, guess what? We're going that way. If your architect says, you don't need bathroom in the whole building, and that's what intermediate care is called for, guess what? We're gonna listen to him or her. Okay, we're gonna depend on the, okay?
I finally get it.
We'll let Mr. Rowley deal with the site plan if you bring us a rubber stamp architect for intermediate care, and then he won't comment about the inside, I promise you.
All right.
How was that?
Well, thank, thank.
That being said, let's continue, let's, let's, let's move to continue this hearing till.
So moved.
So we have a motion to, to the 27, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, opposed, abstained. So we see on the 27, hopefully with more plans, and Mr. Rowley hopefully will have more stuff for us, and because, one second, we're gonna, Mr. Troy Larson, wanna come forward?
You guys are done. We're, we're very short on recording time, so we, we have to be brief with Mr.
Can I just ask a quick question? As, as abutters, some of us were sent a certified letter that we had to sign for, and some of the abutters didn't get anything.
The check with the, with the assessors, they send them. Now, next time, you will not get another letter, just to let you know. You won't be notified again, you gotta come on your own.
Okay.
And on these letters, see with the assessors, they send them.
The assessors' office?
Assessors' office, yes.
And so what's the date for the next hearing?
27.
The 27th of this month?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Troy, come forward. So we have Troy, and we wanna make a formal vote for the selectmen. We met the gentleman, like, he's already a pro, it's been here like 10 times. Last time we made a vote, and we didn't make a vote and stuff, so now what's the wishes of the board, that we're gonna, for an associate member?
The guy certainly has demonstrated a desire and willingness to show up. He's shown up, he's shown up to more meetings than one of our members.
That's right.
Me?
No.
No, no.
All right, so, so what's the wishes of the board, if somebody wanna?
I think it's appropriate to make a recommendation to add, it's Troy Larson?
Yes.
To, to either send an email or have Sonya send a letter on behalf of the board that the board recommends Mr. Larson to become a member of the board.
An associate member. All right, do I have a second on that?
I second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, very well. Hopefully that'll put you in. All right, let's make a motion to adjourn.
No, wait a minute.
Nope, sorry.
One more thing. The selectmen pointed out the fact that we haven't turned in an annual report from this board. I wrote a very cursory draft letter, I asked you all to look at it.
Oh, you put this online, I don't know.
I put it online, yeah, but I want the board to either agree or disagree. One guy said, yeah, sounds good, do it. That's not a vote of the board.
Are we gonna fill in the index XX, or?
Yeah, I wanna correct the, put the right amounts in. I just wanna know if you guys agree with the content, the makeup, the outline, the, the gist of the letter, and if you tell me, yeah, go ahead.
You're gonna add Richard, remember?
We can add Troy if we want to, we can add, we can change.
You can't add Troy, but Richard's here now.
We can, we can put Richard over here.
All right, that looks good for me.
That's good.
Okay, let's make a motion to endorse this.
Okay, make a motion to adjourn.
No, make a motion to endorse Jim's letter.
Oh, okay, I can't, I can't move the.
I'll second that.
Second by Jake, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained.
Thank you.
Thank you, let's make a motion to adjourn.
I got one more question.
Oh, wait a minute.
Will you guys be renewing my associate membership?
Say, say it again?
Will you be renewing my associate membership? At the selectman meeting, they said that they were gonna wait for another recommendation for.
They need us to, they need us to make a recommendation.
For you as well?
That's what they, that's what they told me.
His time is up, and they want a recommendation.
All right, recommendation for Chris?
So moved.
So we have a motion to recommend Chris to be, for another year for associate member. I have a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Jake, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstained, so we recommend.
There's four of us said yes.
So yes, yes, and yes to Mr. Larson. And now motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, thank you for a very long night.
See that, Robert, we didn't even run out of tape.
Robert, you gotta do that a little early.